Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield Regular Committee of the Whole meeting being held on Tuesday, October the 12th at 6 o'clock via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Yeah.
Cruz. Frazier.
Here.
Hoskins. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
And Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, we excuse Councilperson Cruz and we do have a quorum for this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Council, as you know, we have a very full agenda tonight. Um, so I know we have a lot of participants on the call. I will ask if you are not speaking to please mute your line. In addition, item number 10, the preliminary discussion regarding the proposed development on vacant land on West Eight Mile at Northland Drive in Section 36 of the city has been pulled, so it will not be discussed tonight. The first four items on our agenda are asking for, requesting us to consider a Rule 10, just so you will be aware. Okay, our very first item is the application for a charitable gaming license from Zonta Club of Southfield Area Foundation. Madam Clerk?
Madam President and Council Leadership, uh, this is a, uh, request from, uh, Zonta, which stands for Women's Rights. They are advocates for equality, education, and to end, um, child marriage and gender-based violence. Uh, they will be having a raffle on December 1st and, uh, according to state law, they do have to come before the legislative body for approval. Um, originally, they did want to come, um, before the legislative body on, in September 27th meeting, but they were unable to, uh, attend that meeting. So there, we're requesting a Rule 10 for your consideration this evening, so they will be able to, uh, have raffles from, uh, now, which if it's approved from tomorrow until December, uh, to raise money for those causes that I talked about earlier.
Thank you. I'll start with Councilmember Banks. Do you have any questions or concerns regarding this application?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Frazier?
Um, no questions.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no question for me. Thank you.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions.
Thank you. I believe this is a routine item, so I think they, when I say routine, by that I mean they've asked for this before, uh, at least once or twice before that I can remember. So, uh, Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, uncharacteristically, I move for an immediate need to act.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for an immediate need to act for Rule 10. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
And now I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the request for Zonta to hold a, a raffle starting tomorrow through December, uh, whatever the date is, uh, and give them their, our support.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for us to approve the application for charitable gaming license for the Zonta Club of Southfield Area Foundation. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our next item is the liquor license request for suburban liquor.
Uh, Madam President, Honorable Body, we had a request that the City Clerk's Office received a liquor license application from Mr. James Valentine for a transfer of ownership from, uh, suburban liquor, uh, to the new, uh, owners. Uh, the current owner of suburban liquor has been in our city for 52 years and is looking to retire henceforth, the transition of the liquor license. We have received our documents, uh, for this process and all of our, um, inspections have been done at this location and they were, um, they passed inspection to all the qualities of, uh, what the City of Southfield has set forth. So tonight, we're asking this honorable body to approve the transfer request, um, and we are asking for immediate need to act, uh, for this specific request for 29085 Evergreen Road, ownership of a Class C liquor license.
Thank you. Uh, Council, I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell. Any questions or concerns or?
Uh, no. And I would move to enact Rule 10 on this.
Okay, we'll hold on that just one second. Um, Councilman Frazier?
Uh, no, but it's going to be a loss to the City of Southfield. The, the, uh, current owner has been very active with, uh, the city, uh, and has done good things for the city. Uh, he has especially supported the Police Department and we're going to miss him.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this.
Great. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions and Mr. Frazier took the words right out of my mouth.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, um, Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, I move that we, uh, enact Rule 10, this item.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for an immediate need to act, a Rule 10 on this item. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I move that we approve liquor license request of suburban liquor as stated.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the acceptance of the liquor license request transfer for suburban liquor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Frazier?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, and congratulations on the transfer, and again, just as was spoken, we will definitely miss the former owner, Mr. George Achu, and all the service and support that you've given the city. Our next item is acceptance of the Eden Corp easement agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Planner Crowe. Good evening to our honorable council.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm requesting that the council accept the easement, um, to construct an eight-to-ten-foot-wide short-use pathway from southbound Northwestern Highway from Loser to Civic Center. If we can go to the next slide, please? Uh, earlier this year, I presented the overall concept of our path, uh, city center pathway system that now totals 7.75 miles within the city center. This stretch of, uh, pathway actually extends all the way down to Nine Mile, and we're working on an additional half-mile, southbound of Nine Mile to connect to the future Northland Center redevelopment. This is the last remaining goat path or undeveloped pedestrian pathway system in the entire 1.75 miles of the city center. We, uh, routinely see pedestrians, uh, walking along this stretch, uh, especially Lawrence Tech students, uh, athletes, and, and others who are, um, accessing retail establishments on Loser Road and 11 Mile. We have been negotiating for over six months with Eden Corp, dealing primarily with their out-of-town, uh, legal department, and we've finally negotiated an easement that is, uh, typical of the easements that we've previously secured with Lawrence Tech University, as well as the stretch where Red Pole Park is located. Prior to us going out to bid as protocol, we're asking the council to authorize and accept the easement, subject to the project being funded, fully funded, due to timing constraints. In order for us to get this out to bid, uh, and secure bids by the end of the year and meet all of our, uh, subsequent deadlines for approvals from the Southfield City Center and ultimately the council in December, we, we need, uh, immediate need to act with your, with your approval. The, um, photo on the right shows, uh, Eden Corp parcels, which represent two separate parcels. It makes up just over half of the project area. In order for us to save funding and not construct solely in the right-of-way, um, where there are currently open swales and ditches, there's a significant cost savings to being allowed to, um, move the pathway somewhat on their property. We can go to the next slide, please? This is a concept layout from our engineers of the proposed pathway, which meanders between the right-of-way and, um, private parcels. It actually makes the, um, pathway more safer because it removes further from the road and traffic and makes it more interesting because there's some curves and, uh, um, diversity to the trail instead of being a straight trail. So we're asking tonight for the council to accept easement, subject to the city attorney and the planner signing off on the final documents, and then, um, be executed by the clerk and mayor at the appropriate time if the bids come in within our budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council, I'll start with you, Councilman Frazier? Okay, we'll come back to you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions for me. I'm just glad that we're, we're getting, continuing the pathway.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, no questions, and I concur what Councilman Mandelbaum said.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? Okay, we can't hear you. And, uh, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I was chattering along like a parrot and found out I was still on mute, so. Um, if we give permission tonight, will that be adequate enough to get the, uh, whatever construction needs to be done before the end of the year?
Well, um, through the chair to Councilman Frazier, we're trying to, um, bid the project out this year and firm up the costs for construction in next spring. And, um, there, there are certain, um, requirements that we have to meet to be able to get to that point. And, uh, the protocol is that we need to have the easement first secured and approved by council before we can even bid this project out. And given the timing of the bid documents, bid letting, the bid review, and then getting it back to the appropriate bodies for authorization to lock in the price, we, we need to move forward, um, hopefully tonight, and we anticipate this will be constructive next spring.
And how long is the easement that we would like to build on?
Well, the, um, typically, there's a, a construction easement and then about a 10, 10, 10 to 15-foot wide, 10 to 14-foot wide easement, uh, because you have to have two-foot of clearance on either side. And we'll be bidding this out for eight-foot wide construction and a 10-foot wide construction, depending on, on the cost. Uh, as far as length, um, this stretch is about a half a mile, and so the easement is, is probably just about a third of the mile in length. But, uh, this is just an approximate location. The easement does meander between the right-of-way and the private property, um, to avoid the swales, uh, and open ditches as well as some grading, and then comes back to the right-of-way prior to, uh, connecting to Civic Center.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, yes, excuse the, um, fumbling with the mute, but, uh, Terry, um, and I'm, I'm obviously, this is very proactive, and I think from a health and safety standpoint is a very good idea, and aesthetic standpoint. Uh, do you know whether there have been any, uh, pedestrian vehicle accidents, uh, in the last three or four years?
Well, I, I actually just requested that information from the fire, um, chief. He's going to look back for five years, um, and, and I tried to identify where the pedestrian vehicle conflicts are, um, so that we can create a, an overall strategy citywide. And other than that, I, I don't want to speculate on, uh, on where they are. I do know there's a number at, at the Eight Mile Crossing. I know there's been some on Southfield Road, um, but, um, I'm, I'm going to wait for his report. But, uh, I can, I, I can, I can assure you that, uh, there is a bike lane that, that was, um, constructed, installed when the road was redone, but less than 2% of people feel comfortable actually riding on the road, the, the better bikers like that. But 98% of people want to be on an off-road, and we, we call this a shared-use pathway because it's designed for both pedestrians and bicyclists, and it makes the entire stretch, uh, more accessible to all.
Sure. No, no, and we're being proactive, I'm, and just intuitively, uh, we would know that there's been some, um, vehicle, individual person incidents, at least in the last five years. So this, this is very good. Um, I'm for this, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Council, there is an immediate, their request for an immediate need to act?
It's Councilman Brightwell. I move that we have an immediate need to act on this item.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for an immediate need to act. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, if we could have the council now approve the resolution accepting the, uh, the easement, subject to a final approval by the city attorney and planner.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the Eden easement agreement as presented.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the acceptance of the Eden Corporation easement. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and, uh, hopefully we'll be bringing this back at the, uh, end of the year for, uh, for approval, final approvals. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Council, if I may take a little, uh, Council President privilege, I meant to mention at the beginning of our meeting that our sister city mayor, Kelly Garrett, has lost her son this past weekend, very, very saddened by that. Could we please have just a moment of silence in honor of her son Chandler? And just to show our support for Mayor Kelly Garrett, please? Council, thank you so much. Our next item is the, um, Southfield Police Department Emergency Vehicle Operation Training.
Good evening, Madam President, and also other members of, of council and the community. Uh, so yes, the Southfield Police Department, we are requesting emergency vehicle operations training. What stood out to me, uh, they called for this training, is that after an audit was conducted, it was determined that we have 36 police officers who have not had any advanced driving training since their initial days at the police academy. And the reason why this is, is significant, when you look at the national data, uh, accidents or in the line-of-duty accidents is the leading cause of death of police officers. In fact, uh, last year, 42 police officers lost their lives due to accidents, and already this year, we still got more time to go, we've already lost 35 police officers due to, uh, in the line-of-duty vehicle accidents. So I did contact the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. They have a very comprehensive and advanced training program and asked them to put on the training for our department. Uh, when you look at the curriculum of, of the training, our officers will be trained in vehicle dynamics, vehicle maintenance, defensive driving, performance driving, skid control. And just an example, what skid control is, uh, a layer of, of skid is laid out on a roadway to simulate rain and or snow conditions, uh, again, increasing our officers' ability to drive in such conditions. Civil liability is also on the curriculum. When you look at, uh, police departments across the country, there are a lot of cities that lose, uh, money due to negligent handling of vehicles. So again, very important that we continue, uh, responsible driving, night driving and also pursuit driving. Another portion of this course is on pit maneuver. And I've shared, uh, videos with council, if you may remember, of the times we had a violent suspect who committed a carjacking in Ferndale. That individual came into our city, we did pursue him, and what a pit maneuver does, when a vehicle was traveling at 40 miles an hour or less, our officers, uh, given that the circumstances are safe, make intentional contact with that vehicle, which spins that vehicle into a 180-degree turn. When that action happens, the vehicle goes into reverse before it comes to rest, and when it goes into reverse, the transmission is temporarily disabled, allowing our police officers to box that vehicle in and make that arrest. And again, I shared a few videos, uh, of successful, uh, pit maneuvers that officers have, have done since my tenure here at the Southfield Police Department. The cost of this training, uh, is $21,000. Uh, when you look at our training budget, we currently have $147,630.92 in that budget, so plenty of money to, to get this training conducted. The date that the county has available to train our officers is October 23rd. Therefore, I am requesting a Rule 10, uh, to get this training done timely and urgently. And that concludes my, uh, my report.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Council, I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Sorry, uh, no questions for me, even though the chief will let me participate in the training.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes, Chief, um, I'm 100% for this, and I recall when I first, I think in my second year, third year on council, we authorized the, your entire staff to go through that training with Oakland County Sheriff. Um, will, will, will there be a, uh, let's say, a refresher program for the existing staff? Um, and I realize this is for the new staff, but would there be a, a proposed refresher program for officers who, uh, might not have, uh, through this, it's been four, they missed some years if they went through it?
Right, and so, uh, as I mentioned earlier in my remarks, um, there are 36 officers who have not had training since their academy days. And so, the ones who have recently, uh, completed the training, uh, they're not a part of this program, but to answer your question, yes, uh, my plan is to have sustainability in training to ensure that we provide our officers with this type of training at least every three years. So that is a plan that I will be rolling out, um, and to include coming back before council, uh, at the appropriate time for additional members to be, uh, trained in, uh, enhancing their driving techniques and understanding the importance of driver safety. So yes.
Thanks, Chief. I'll be 100% supporting the, uh, sustainability of rotating those guys, we're rotating your offices periodically through this project because, um, like you say, it's, it's a dangerous job out there driving, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh, yes, I have, uh, one question. Um, you asked for the 36 to be trained, and you said Oakland County will be, uh, has given you a date of the 23rd. Now, are all 36 of those officers going to be trained on the same day, or is it starting on the 23rd?
Yes, so it starts on, on the 23rd, and, and they will be rotated through, uh, during that week.
Okay, 'cause I can't imagine that, uh, they would get adequate training of 36 people had to go through in an eight-hour day to learn how to do all the things that need to be done in order to be safe and keep the city safe. So, I'm supporting.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our questions. Um, there is an immediate need to act request, Council?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to m- make a motion for a Rule 10.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for an immediate need to act. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Um, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Southfield Police Department Emergency Vehicle Operation Training.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the Southfield Police Department Emergency Vehicle Operations Training. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz? Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. And congratulations, Chief.
And thank you all, uh, for approving this much-valued training. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, next, we have our Parks and Rec Five-Year Master Plan presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, Council Leadership. This is Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, I'm joined by Summer Woods from Woods and Watts Effect. We'd like to share information with you this evening regarding the Parks and Recreation Master Plan process, but specifically highlighting the community engagement portion and how our residents can take an active role. Um, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Summer Woods from Woods and Watts Effect. Summer?
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Um, thank you to this, uh, honorable body. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to speak this evening. As Terry said, my name is Summer Woods. I'm with Woods and Watts Effect. We are an equity-inclusion, uh, consulting firm based in Detroit. Um, within this, within the work that we do is, um, specifically to helping organizations, um, municipalities, institutions, to do, uh, community engagement with an equitable lens, but also as it relates to just internal cultural competency, as well as equity inclusion integrated into everyday life. Um, so excited to be a part of this project. So, we'll go ahead and get it kicked off today so we can advance to the next slide. Awesome. So what we wanted to do, just as we look at the, the conversation about community engagement, specifically to the Southfield community, is it is very important that the, that we have some objectives. And what's important for us from an objective perspective is to make sure that we are, uh, getting the opportunity for every community member to voice their opinion about how they for every community member to voice their opinion about how they would like to use the parks, the park and, as well as recreation facilities there in Southfield. And so in order to do that, that means that we need to get it out as large of many platforms as possible. We want to make sure that it is as equitable as possible, making sure that we're mindful of just the digital divide, making sure that we're mindful of those that utilize the park and those that would like to utilize the park. So with that, what we did is we created a plan that we're going to get into a little bit in a couple of slides. It essentially are different avenues and different ways that we're going to get the messaging out for the community to know how they can provide what they would like to see in their own park and recreation assets of Southfield. We can go to the next slide. So from a key audience perspective, you know, there are a few buckets and obviously these are the ones that are a highlight within our approach of key audiences for the engagement itself. Uh, City of Southfield residents obviously is first and foremost. Those that use the park, Neighborhood Association block clubs, the faith-based community, seniors, youth and family, college students, the business community, visitors and general public. What's important when we look at all these different demographics is obviously everybody has different needs. Um, and obviously what it looks like now is going to look totally different than what it looks like in five years. And so we do want to make sure that we're mindful of understanding also the demographic of the individuals that we are speaking to, because obviously if you're someone that has young people or has kids that are going to be in the playscape, your lens may be a little bit different versus someone who doesn't have kids or a little bit older. So we do want to make sure that we're getting feedback from a broader audience so that it does have a lot of impact on how the actual design, of the plan is actually designed. Next slide. So the engagement process itself is we work hand-in-hand with the Park and Recreation Department in terms of planning, coming up with this implementation plan and what is going to, and again, we'll talk about the timeline, but there's a couple of different ways that people will be able to, to provide feedback. This survey that has been created is really to gather again, some of those, some of that, you know, some of that feedback, what do you want, what does that look like, what works, what do you want to stay? And not only is it going to be through a survey that can be taken online as well as having available hard copies in person, but we will also have a couple of in-person opportunities, obviously being mindful of COVID and social distancing. Um, we want to be able to give many, as many opportunities of engagement for people to have a touch point. In that, the master plan will be created, so all of that feedback from the community that if they say, hey, this is what we're interested in, this is what's important, that will all be the basis of designing the plan itself. And so in order to have, you know, a, a plan that is inclusive and equitable and it is reflective of the community, we know that it's important to get this, to get as much feedback as possible, hence our engagement plan and what that looks like. After the master plan is, is completed, there's a, there's a review period that the community will be able to see what has been designed per the, per the plan, per the feedback. And then after that, we will then come to city council for approval for the actual master plan itself. Next slide. So this is the, uh, just the implementation in terms of different, uh, at different vehicles that we are going to, uh, that we have put into play. Um, we were able to, Southfield Living, Southfield Living printed copy, we were able to get an ad in there that was actually, uh, that would be going out into the market this week. Uh, we've also been working, and I like to just, you know, from the beginning, just talk about all of the individuals, um, from the department, from Lisa and Cable and Michael. Everybody has been very helpful to make sure that we are leveraging all of the assets and the resources that the City of Southfield has with the window that we are working with. And so we have the City Living, which we know will go to every resident, that we put an ad in there encouraging people again to go to the digital website for the survey, but also inviting them to come to the open house, um, working with Lisa and, and City Cable um, in terms of an advertisement that would be circulating on, on, on the cable channel, as well as the opportunity to be able to tell the story about what the master plan process is that Terry will do an interview with Chris Campbell, um, to really bring a little bit more life and thought process behind it. And then we'll also do some social media, we'll do a Facebook, Instagram posts, um, as well as boosts, you know, doing a different boost with a different social media outlet. So again, looking at all ways, we know that some people want to be able to have it through traditional hard copy and we know some people might want to have it digital, we know some people might see it on TV, we want to be able to hit it from all aspects. We are also have the press release and story pitch, working with Michael this week, um, that will be able to get that out so that we're able to again, get the messaging out as much as possible. We took out an ad in the Southfield Sun, um, that will be coming out this week, um, this week as well, uh, for, uh, for just again, explaining to tell people to go to the survey as well as the open house. Then we have flyers that we're going to circulate, um, as well as the community open houses that are going to be in person on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The in-person, um, uh, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth will be the last of that, so the survey is, is live and people can actually go to the website um, in order to fill out, um, the survey this week, starting this week. We can go to the next slide. So we also created a communication toolkit, because we know it's very important that there are different ways in order to communicate. So this is the graphic creative, the, the brand that we, um, that we put together in order to make sure that we want to have something that was attractive to people to see themselves and see people engaging and being a part of it, um, but also making it as easy as possible, having a QR code that they can scan in order to take you right to the website. Um, but we're going to do it through all different outlets that I just communicated. To that point though, we would love for city council to be able to, um, to use these same communication tools to get it to, um, your constituents and stakeholders as well. We can go to the next slide. Um, oh, it looks like it's a little distorted there with the timeline, so I don't know if it's, if it's just my, oh, there it is, oh, it was a little transition, alright, little graphic transition there. Um, just a couple of dates that are important, we, we, like I said, distributed the, the survey this week. Um, we are also going to be having a key, external key stakeholder meeting next week. Um, and when we say external, that's internal, external in terms of stakeholders, so that will be individuals and organizations that are tied into, uh, Park and Recs and just overall with the city, um, as well to get some feedback as we go, because that too is a part of the process, um, not, you know, in, in addition to the community itself. The community open houses, again, on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, um, that will be at Civic Center from six to eight, and it's just an opportunity again for individuals to come through and to provide feedback. From that time until, uh, up until the point of December first, we will essentially be taking all this information, gathering all the feedback from the survey that's from online, from the open house, um, in order to create the master plan that will then be up for community review for that month. A couple of key review, uh, review and just approval dates. Um, we know that they will have to be with the Planning Commission Review, um, in, in January as well as the, uh, the public hearing approval, um, as well. And we know we also have to make sure with the Park Commission Board that that is to be determined in terms of the date, that we will have to, um, get this in front of them. Uh, this is all being driven, um, by the, the, the state of Michigan from the DNR, that we have to be able to submit this, um, for the grant in order, uh, for the master plan itself, which is the January twenty-seventh date. So we would also have that city council approval, which would be on the twenty-fourth based off of the plan that is presented and feedback from the community during that period. Next slide. Awesome. So in, in a nutshell, that, uh, just in terms of our timeline, in terms of the overview of how we're looking to, to attack the community, uh, just in, from an engagement perspective, getting out as many out, you know, as many avenues and outlets as much as possible, um, is, is very important. So we do want to make sure that we're intentional through those different, uh, communication tools. So thank you again for your time and, uh, Terry, I don't know if you have anything or if there's any questions from this honorable body.
Thank you, Summer, we'd be happy to answer any questions, Council President from, from council?
Thank you, again, council, this is just our presentation, which was excellent. Thank you, Ms. Woods, for presenting to us and giving us all this information. Um, so I'm going to turn to council and we'll ask any questions that we have now. I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this is great and I, I like the fact that there's going to be a lot of community involvement. Uh, Parks is one of my sweet spots because my kids and I love going to all the parks. My question is though, this is a very aggressive timeline and I'm wondering if it would make sense to also have a community open house in early November. Um, you have, you know, the back-to-back dates, but would, would it make sense to have something in, you know, maybe a week or two later in November? Because it could be somebody's out of town for those two dates, they at least have another opportunity.
Yeah, we, and we did look at that as it relates to the timeline and that's the reason why we also have the survey that will be open a little bit longer for that option as well. We just want to make sure that we have enough time in order to, um, assess and analyze all of the data in order for us to get, um, a draft to Park and Recs, um, before we, you know, in terms of the community review period, so it's, it's just a tight window even as it relates to for us to turn around the data as well. So that's why we're trying to do it in multiple ways, if you can't do it in person, great, but we also have the survey as an option too.
Okay, and, and then you have city council approval on Monday, the twenty-fourth. Um, is that when we, do we have a public hearing on that date?
I will yield to, uh, to Terry in terms of that timeline.
Actually, we go before the Planning, uh, Commission for the hearing and then that is reviewed and then we move to the city council approval that evening. So you had the opportunity prior to review the document and then we asked for your approval on the twenty-fourth to make that twenty-seventh deadline.
So if city council has questions or wants something changed, we won't really have an opportunity?
Well, the, the, there's all kinds of ways for council to give us input. Um, that, that document is going to be posted, uh, that month of December and that's for everyone. Um, so we will take information, um, during that timeframe. So the, the ability to, to continue to give input will be there. Um, the Planning Commission is open for folks as well. So the document will be on display for quite a while before it reaches council on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand why there, the, there's the Planning Commission Review and then the Planning Commission has their public hearing as well and the city council only has pretty much one opportunity to sit as a body to, um, go over the document and it's really more just, uh, seems like a formality just to approve it rather than really review it and ask questions. You know, generally, council members are not, should not, I guess, go to the Planning Commission and make comments and things like that, because we're the final approving body. You know, and I'm sure the document will be quite large. Um, so to me, it just, it just seems a little odd that they're having two opportunities and council pretty much just has to approve it, that's all.
I, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, I, I think we, we are, this is a little bit of a consequence of the tight timeframe that we have, Councilman Mandelbaum. So we're doing our best to give our residents as much opportunity to give input as, as well as, as all of our, all of our residents, um, and, and have the opportunity to give their feedback, but, um, also, um, look at the plan, um, as a board. But I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. So I, I believe we're, we're really on a tight timeframe as far as already scheduled meetings and then trying to also be in line with, with what we need to do for the DNR.
Alright, um, perhaps we can modify the state though and have, have it at a, a committee of a whole meeting for the city council prior to the January fourth meeting, um, even if it's similar to what the Planning Commission is, is reviewing, um, just so there's no surprises or the city council can make additional changes.
Sure, if there's an opportunity for us to do that, we certainly will work to, to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, not, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, I agree with everything that Councilman Mandelbaum said and I would like this also to come to council at a committee of the whole meeting before it comes to council for a final approval. I don't want to be in a situation that, um, council experienced with the Beechwood, um, proposal when it was presented to us. Um, also, how are you going to circulate flyers?
Yeah, so the flyers are going to be, um, at different, um, locations, um, throughout, like throughout the different assets for park and recreation specifically. Um, since we've already, you know, we have the opportunity with Southfield Living to have it to everyone going to their, to their homes, doing it with Southfield Sun. So those flyers, um, will be at the different Park and Rec, um, locations, the class, you know, the people taking classes, being a part of it, and also, you know, um, providing it through digital, uh, through digital distribution, through different email list, um, and stakeholders through that as well. So there's a, there's a mix of a digital flyer as well as a hand, um, paper flyer to supplement the couple of, uh, options that we have as going to every single resident, at, at every single residency.
Okay, um, I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but, um, I know in my area, which is near the, um, Berg Point, we don't get the Southfield Sun, they just don't deliver it. So I basically don't even consider that a newspaper anymore and I rely more on the Oakland Press. So I would like to see you do some advertising in the Oakland Press, um, until the Southfield Sun can figure out why the residents of Southfield are not getting the paper. Um, and also because this is such a tight, tight schedule, I believe that we also should, um, send a flyer or email to all the homeowner associations and ask all of them to share it with their members.
Yes.
So maybe they will have an opportunity, because, you know, a lot of people still are not, um, coming to City Hall or, you know, a lot of the Parks and Recreation facilities. So, you know, you're not going to pick up a flyer in the park and, I mean, I'm just thinking of myself, where, where would I see a flyer?
So absolutely, absolutely, Councilmember.
My, um, you know, our, our homeowners, um, homeowners association, we're trying to be really, really proactive in getting all the information out. And again, I can just speak for my area, um, I think that would be a, a little bit better than the Southfield Sun, you know.
Absolutely, so, yep, so to your point about the, the homeowners, that is one of the distribution lists that we are, um, going to be working with Michael and, and his department to get that out to those different lists. So that's absolutely on, um, that implementation list. Um, and as it relates to Oakland Press, you know, we'll definitely look into it, but even as it relates to pitching the story and making sure that we're able to get some press around it, the Oakland Press is on that list in terms of trying to make sure that we can get the word out. So we will absolutely look at that as, as an option, um, but just wanted to just confirm with you as well that we are going to use and send it out to the homeowner list, working with, uh, Michael and his team.
Okay, and, uh, we do have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for January tenth. I really think you need to add this to your key engagement dates. Um, you know, even if it hasn't gone before the Planning Commission, because, um, as my colleague said, I just don't, you know, think it should come to us so we can rubber stamp it, and then if there's questions, you've got to submit it just a few days later. There's, there's really not enough time.
Okay, absolutely, this is, uh, all helpful as we, um, go back to the team and make sure that we're able to, uh, come up with the, the best way to implement, um, those requests. So thank you for that, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Well, I echo, um, my colleagues' comments and concerns. And I probably will have some additional questions, but with respect to sampling, I'm a big believer in statistical sampling. How are you proposing to, to, um, control that?
Control it within the sense of making sure that it is a, um, diverse aspect of, of sampling? What, what part of that are you, because we're asking also, you know, demographic-wise and, and being intentional through the different groups to make sure that we have a broad perspective of sampling? Is that, is that what you mean, councilmember?
Yes, yeah, exactly, and, and, and my, my, what, what's driven, driving this question for me? And this was going to come up again on some other, something else on council, where people would, uh, presenters would indicate we had X amount to, uh, respond. Uh, X amount, you know, X amount of what? I mean, it, it has to be a universe there, so I, I want to, when this comes back, I'm, I will be drawing now on the universe that you're looking at and is that representative? I know we got seventy-six thousand people in Southfield and I, I'm not looking at ten of seventy-six thousand, but what is your, what is, what, what, and that's, what, how are you controlling? But what is your, what is, what what in essence, what how are you controlling this sampling?
Yeah, no, that's a that's a great question. I mean, to um, you know, to Councilmember Banks' perspect- you know, opinion or what she was, you know, just actually stating as it relates to COVID and people's comfortability and where they're going and what that looks like, we do have to try to get this out as is um as as many places as possible, but what we have discovered in this year of COVID within an engagement world that it has been challenging to get, you know, a larger or not, like, oh, we want so many people to be able to respond to it, that that's the reason why we do have such also an aggressive implementation plan, which another one of those um is we're also going to put up posters as well as um like real estate signs so people could physically see as many. So again, we're trying to get in as as many places as possible, because to your point, um, you know, Councilmember, what one of the things that um is important is to understand that when we're talking about equitable engagement, that means as many sa- you know, as many people as sampling as possible, but also making sure that it's a diverse makeup. So as a part of the survey, we do ask some demographic questions as well um to get a little bit of a better understanding of who is actually answering uh the survey and who was a part of it, because we do think that is a major part um of making sure that we have um a a reflection of the community as well. So you will see that in the report that there will be a demographic um, a demographic session, section as well that will be able to speak to what you're, what you are uh asking.
Okay, well, I'll be, I'll be looking for it. This is a nice, this presentation and I appreciate it and I can, I can see the um um the effort that went into it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Brightwell.
Thank you very much. Uh Councilman Frazier?
Yes, um, I do have some questions. Uh, one of the things is that it was a a pretty jam-packed presentation. And uh, one of, one of the things that I am notorious for uh and that is uh asking for rule tens. And the reason that I think that a lot of times that we get into a situation where we need to do a rule ten is we don't really give ourselves adequate time to do planning. And it seems like uh we get a lot of hurry up things. And example, tonight, we had several, not only, not all our making, but a lot of times it's from our own staff because uh it doesn't seem like they've given themselves enough time and all of a sudden it's a hurry up thing, come to council and before we get a chance to take a a decent look at it. And I'm not asking to drag it out for years, but there is a reasonable amount of time to go over some things to uh make some plans. And uh, so that's why I've railed kind of against rule tens or or compressed uh plans that come before us that we have to make a hurry up decision. And then we find out later on that it didn't work the way we thought it was gonna work. Um, but one of the things that, one of the questions I want to ask is, does this plan take in all kinds of of recreational activity, uh all the way from like pocket parks to our larger parks, plus the activities that go on in those parks?
Yes, yes, it 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 does, Councilmember Frazier. It actually, the goal of it is to give the residents an opportunity to be aspirational within how they use the park and how they would like to use, what they, what they'd like to use the park, right? And so as we go through the master plan process, using that data would be able to assist our design and architecture landscape team in order to create, you know, that plan based off of of that feedback. So it may be some, you know, so it's all of the, all of the assets that you all have would be considering that. So let's say, for example, if someone's like, oh, we get a large number of, we would like to have, you know, more basketball courts, you know, do you do you look at that from a data perspective to figure out where it makes sense and where to put it? Like, all of that does, is is taken into consideration, but it is all of the assets that would be assessed, um and getting feedback from from the community, just overall how they like to use parks. Uh, we're not getting that specific to like, at this park, what do you like, what don't you like? We're asking more from a bigger picture perspective of 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 how they use and interact and engage with with parks and rec now.
Uh, I do know that uh for uh a large number of years, uh especially the seniors have been asking for zero depth pool, a zero depth pool. And, you know, almost for as long as they've been asking for a zero depth pool, uh, we've been trying to decide what we're going to do with the pool we already have. But the the other thing too is, there are an awful lot of our people that have gone to Farmington Hills and have seen the Kostic Center and uh have been asking for uh and a place similar to the Kostic Center. So I'm sure you're gonna get that kind of a a response to the surveys that you send out, so. Uh, but my major concern is uh compressing the the timeframe so much that we don't have adequate time to take a look at it. And I don't want to, I don't want to drag it out because everybody starts second and third guessing each other, so. That's my comments.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Frazier. I know one of the things that we know the timelines are important and that's why we want it to be, you know, as intentional as well as as much impact within it in terms of getting the messaging out. Um, because we know this is all based off of the D N R deadline date. And so we're trying to back into it and get as much um and as be as intentional as possible with that tight timeline that you all have spoken to. So uh we will definitely take that back to the team.
Yeah, and if, you know, the, I guess, maybe, and I don't want to be sarcastic, but if you're not gonna pay attention to the, what the people say, why send out the survey?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's like, again, that's why we want to have that time. That's the challenge. Like, that month of November is all about synthesizing that and being able to make sure that we are, that we are intentional and impactful. We're not just checking a box. We're taking that data and putting it in to the thought of the design to allow the community to have a review process off of what they said, how we interpreted it with it, you know, how that's laid out. So we we do very much know that that is a very important part to make sure that we have um some inclusive equitable design, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I think um my my colleagues have all kind of said it. There, I also have a concern about the timeline. And would definitely like to see if we can get another council meeting in uh before this January twenty fourth date. Um, like, as of this week, so what is happening this week? I see survey distributed, but what are, what are some of the things that are gonna be happening this week?
So this week, we're actually, you know, survey, the survey is gonna be circulated, the 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 like I said, the Southfield Sun is going out this week, Southfield Living ad is going out this week. So everything is basically going out in terms of letting people know that we would like to receive their feedback, right? We want to hear from them. So all of that is starting this week with a heavy push to remind people through different outlets, um, you know, through, you know, through social media, through different email distributions that we would just enhance it. So this is the week that actually um we are launching the survey as well as the different ads that we have put out there to get the uh conversation uh percolating.
And is there a concern about that we might just, we might not get enough of a response? With the timeline being so so tight, I mean, um well, let me, let me ask another question. What is this community review period? What does that look like?
So the community review period essentially for that um that month when you put the plan, when you put the plan out for the community to be able to provide feedback, that's again, you know, for the community to say, oh, you know, again, commenting on what it is, but that plan itself has been or will be created based off of the feat, based off of the survey and the open house and all the data and the external stakeholder meeting and those type of things, that will all be used for that. More of the community review is just to get any additional um feedback off of the actual master plan itself.
Okay, now going back to my my last question. So are we, is there a concern that we might not get enough feedback from people during this uh this next two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, we feel positive in the sense of that we're going to push and get the messaging out um through all vehicles and and all outlets. And that's the reason why we want to definitely have all hands on deck. And that's why we were very intentional to make it as turnkey as possible with the communication toolkit that all people have to do is literally just, you know, download or put a J P E G into a into a uh communication and send it out or reaching out to people. So we are making sure that we're intentional um with our, you know, with internal stakeholders and as well as external stakeholders. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna push and and drive it as much as possible. Like I said, you know, unfortunately, within this world of COVID, we have seen just um an engagement impact throughout just the state of Michigan itself. That is not, you know, you're trying to find creative ways with COVID and getting it, you know, getting it out there as many ways as possible. Uh, but we do feel confident that with these different communication tools we have in place um that we're gonna, you know, push as as hard and is um as intentional as possible. So I wish I can look into a magic ball and say, we think we're gonna get this. Um, but we think based off of that implementation plan, that it is uh that is very strong um in terms of making sure within that window, we're trying to hit as many avenues through as many communication assets as possible.
Okay, um I'm just, and I'm just curious about the previous master plan. Um, what, how, what were some of the things that we were able to take um from that experience? What were some of the things that we implemented um throughout the time from from when we did that plan until now?
But I can, I I'd like to answer that. So Councilman Hoskins, uh the last uh master plan uh that we did here for our city um did not have as many uh avenues for feedback. So for instance, uh and and we didn't reach as far, I can tell you, and and we weren't, we weren't wrestling with the pandemic at the time. So uh Summer had talked about some signage out at our parks. Um, that survey is not there, but the signage is going to be at all of our twelve playgrounds that we have. Um, we are being much more aggressive, I believe, just in having the um the collaborations that we've developed over the last five years. For instance, we've got great relationships with COSA. Um, our police department is uh gonna be at the stakeholders meeting along with COSA. We've got uh a reach to our faith-based organizations that we did not do at the last uh five-year master plan. Um, so I believe that the reach is much more extensive. Um, I think that our questions on the survey are more intuitive to what uh Councilman Frazier talked about. For instance, one of our questions is, do you feel as though you have a park in your neighborhood that's easily accessible? Uh, we leave open-ended questions on this survey, whereas the last time around, we did not do that. Um, we want some information based on our experiences and our relationships with our residents because we're even closer to them than we were the last five years. So we ask questions about dog parks. We asked, Councilman Frazier uh talked about a pool. Um, we would love to put a zero depth uh pool in. But everyone knows that our wishes and our finances sometimes don't meet. And so we really want to know going forward, do some of those same um requests resonate right now? Um, do we, do we want a hockey rink? Do we, when's the last time you visited um one of your neighborhood parks? Who's the most popular, what's the most popular park that you that you visit and does it have all the amenities there? So I think that our questions are much more um uh much more information-seeking, if you will. We've worked closely with the planning department. We've been through this before. Um, so there's a lot of folks that are that much more experienced. Um, we've reached out to a number of folks that were involved uh the last five years. But again, we've developed relationships through our collaborations, our business partnerships, Bus Western. Um, all of those folks who we've developed relationships with through our programming. Uh, we ask a lot of questions about programming and what folks want to see um from their Parks and Recreation Department. So I think that this time around, it's much more aggressive, yes, given the timeline. And again, you know, I would love to be able to take six months for uh these kinds of projects. But when we did the Beechwoods Master Plan, we were doing that during um the pandemic. Because we promised folks that we were going to do that master plan and we did. It did take longer. And so on the end of this, we have a shorter amount of time to try and meet the deadline of the D N R. Um, but but we're doing the best that we can. All the suggestions that were made here tonight are great suggestions. We'll look at bringing this before uh you at a at a C O W so that you can take a look at it as well. Um, but I think we're we're more experienced, our reach is more aggressive. We're gonna have posters out at uh our facilities. People don't always like to take those surveys um online, so we already have uh copies printed. Um, and they're gonna be at our facilities tomorrow morning. Um, so it's, it really is uh um a a short timeframe when you look at it all, but I believe that we really have a great uh uh group with with Summer and and her partner and and O H M to to really take this on. Um, our last uh master plan, we brought in probably two hundred and seventy-five uh survey results. The Beechwoods Master Plan doubled that. So um we look to have positive results with this. I I don't think it's Pollyanna or wishful thinking. I think it's hard work. I think that everybody can can take a part of this uh on as well with spreading the word and and really driving folks um to to the surveys and and to our our open houses. Um, and and they can always call here. So um we are, we are um, we're looking forward to folks really having a voice. We know that this comes on the heels of of Beechwoods and so um if if we know folks are gonna want to talk about that a little bit and still talk and and tell us what they'd like to see, um and and we're open uh to to everything that folks have to say about the park system. Um, we've, we've got beautiful parks here, but we also have parks that haven't had a lot of attention. The dollars just have not been there. So when dollars come available, it's really important that we're investing in what our, in what our residents really want to see. And I hope you understand and hope you know that you have a Parks and Recreation team and those folks that we bring on board um to really resonate what our folks want to see.
All right, and thank you for that answer. Um, I I just have one more quick question. When is uh, when is the survey gonna be on the city's website?
Um, so again, that's gonna be, um, I know we just uh with with the office being or office being closed yesterday, uh we're trying to get all of our ducks in a row for like things for Wednesday for tomorrow, um that would be on the Park and Recs website on the city.
Okay, all right, that's just all the questions I have.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, uh Terry, and thank you, Ms. Woods. This has been a very good discussion. Thank you very much. Uh, and we are waiting very patiently and excitedly uh for next steps. So uh we wish you all the best with the surveys and full participation from the city of Southfields, residents, businesses and all that traverse through the city. So um I think this will be a success and I I'm looking forward to the outcome and the results and hearing what people are actually looking for.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I was gonna say unless the mayor or or is the mayor on the line? Does he have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I I just want to, um, the questions have been very good. I have a clarifying uh question. I have heard from several residents uh about improvements to existing um uh offerings. So for instance, uh someone contacted me and said, I wish they'd put more gravel down on the Carpenter Lake Trail. Uh, another person said, uh uh contacted me and said, is there any way uh Parks and Rec could pave the walking path at Engle Look uh as um there's some some areas where it's become very muddy? Um, so is is that, uh well, comments like that, is there space for comments like that? Um, in other words, they're they're pleased with what's there, but they uh want to suggest an improvement. So is there space in this um listing uh for citizen comments like those?
Absolutely, there is. There's some, uh toward the end of the survey, there's some open-ended question on on what you would like to see in your parks and would you like to address anything else that hasn't been asked? So I appreciate that, Mayor. There there is a, an opportunity for folks to be able to comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Administration, was it anything you might want to add?
Fred or?
Uh yes, Madam President, I just wanna, the driver on this timeline was the governor's announcement of a hundred and fifty million dollars. And uh the Parks and Rec team did an excellent job in uh reaching out to s- uh personnel at the state. And we know that the state's gonna be looking for this stuff early, the uh first part of the year. So we're hoping to cue Southfield, Southfield to be in the strongest position to secure those funds. Uh as Ms. Fields indicated, we all have a wish list and things we'd like to see. It's gonna come down to the economics of what we uh can afford. I think there will be an emphasis on maintaining and preserving what we have. Um those are my thoughts. I wanna assure all the council members, we heard your comments. We will get, I, I think that January tenth COW is probably the best date, uh a, another chance. But this outreach exceeds the requirements of the State Planning Act for Parks and Rec plans. We did review that and um, you know, the, as much as criticism uh as there was on the Beechwood plan, I'll remind people, we had over four hundred participants. That was double what the city had in its last master plan. Uh so we will work to incorporate the comments and the feedback from Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh Terry, thank you once again and for such a nice presentation, very informative, a lot of information here. And uh we look to, forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Council, our next item is the-
Madam President and Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
This is Councilman, I just, I had a re, I had a request from Ms. Fields, if possible. Um when this goes live on the website, can you please email us a link as well? Or give us a heads up that it's on the website so we can let people know?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good, good point. Um our next item is authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the Public Works Department?
Thank you and good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
Vehicles was approved in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Five of these vehicles are replacements. None of them are take-home vehicles. One of these vehicles, the vehicle taken out of service will be moved to another department code in Firstland. Four of the vehicles, the vans, will be removed from service because there's not a lot of demand for vans internally and the motor pool feels that they may be a good time to sell them service-wise. This is one vehicle, which is an addition. It is a heavy-duty pickup, which will be used to tow equipment for water. We're purchasing this vehicle because it will allow us to reduce the type of CDL endorsements that city DPW employees use. Starting February twenty-second, I think the standards for CDL Class A training and testing is going to increase quite a bit. And we'd like to move away from that. We've not been requiring that for new employees for some number of years. And moving employees from Class B to Class A would be expensive. We'd like to avoid that cost. This will allow us to do that.
Okay, thank you for your brief presentation. Uh Council, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks. Uh any comments or questions for um Mr. McReina?
Um no comments or questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, John, um is there any salvage value associated with these vehicles that are being replaced?
Yes, sir. We believe that the vans would actually sell very well, given the current market. They are also serviceable at this time. It's just from looking at records and expected maintenance that it's anticipated they may need more maintenance coming up than would make them worthwhile. And of course, vans are a lot more difficult to work on.
Okay, um. Do you have a, but I mean, obviously, uh. Well, is, is there a dollar value associated with the salvage value uh right now?
Sir, since they're sold at auction, we, we don't know what their auction price would bring. We think it would be higher than normal, as you know, the, the uh shortage of vehicles right now. But I don't have the blue book value of these, for instance.
Okay, all right, we're good now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Oh, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh no questions for me on this, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mayor, any questions?
None for me, thank you.
Uh Administration, Councilman, uh I'm sorry, Mr. Zorn?
Okay, thank you.
All right. So this will move to, to our consent agenda, the next uh regular meeting?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next item is, I'm sorry. Does someone have a question? Okay, our next item is receipt of bids for standby emergency snow removal services for Public Works.
Yes, ma'am, again, this is DPW. This is a contract that is put out for bid every couple of years. Rotundo has been the low bidder for the past several years. In fact, this year, they were the only bidder. Prices are comparable to last year, a little bit higher, but they're not used very often. Our DPW staff is, is quite a bit higher than it has been in the past. So most snowstorms, these are, these are not our first line of work. These, this is really second. When a snowstorm gets beyond our capacity, then we call out Rotundo. And last year, we called them out, I believe, one time in February.
Okay. Um Council, uh starting with you, Councilman Brightwell, any questions?
Um no questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Frazier?
Uh just one question. Did you say, uh, Mr. McReina, did you say that only one person bid on it?
Yes, sir, this was the only firm that submitted a bid.
That's interesting. You would think that there would be, uh, you know, with all the rusty trucks I see running around our neighborhood, you would think there'd be other people that at least put in a bid, so. Okay, thanks, that's all I need.
If I could, this may not be the most attractive bid for a company that focuses on snow plowing because we're only, we only call them out once. So it's, it's difficult to maintain equipment. If they can maintain their equipment, they're gonna use it on other jobs. This may not be where a lot of actual snow companies want to uh bid.
Okay.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh no, no question for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
John, can you, for the uh listening audience, can you tell us when the standby service is used?
That would be a case-by-case basis. Primarily, if we're calling in a crew for twelve hours and another crew, or it looks like we're going to, then we're gonna look at it for sure. Other than that, for a more in-depth discussion of our snow plowing strategies, we might wanna just have that as a discussion in and of itself.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Where are we advertising um these bids?
Well, all of our bids go out through Mitten, and that's our primary mechanism for bidding. And most businesses understand that's where governments post.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh Mayor?
I have no questions, thank you.
Fred, the city administrator, Zorn?
The, no, I, I would like to comment. Uh we do keep the city's snowplow, snowplow policy online. And that uh governs, in addition to the shift rotation, when we'll be out to uh clear streets and which roads. Based on a very lengthy conversation we had at uh last Thursday's president's meeting, we have committed to review that plan for uh primarily for secondary streets and uh changes in uh patterns uh eh within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh since we have no other questions, this too will be on our consent agenda uh next, our next regular council meeting?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, our next item, receipt of bids of the lower-level pavilion door replacement project? I believe that's you also, John?
Yes, it is, thank you. These are the electric-operated and manual doors that lead from the underground parking structure into the lower level of pavilion where the stairs are and where the field zone is. Both doors are in need of replacement. We actually bid this out once in conjunction with the doors for the ice arena. However, the bidding company, I feel they bid too low. They did complete the ice arena doors. They were not able to complete the doors for the pavilion. We put it out for bid. It did come back a little higher, again with only one suitable bid, which was commercial glass of Novi and came in at twenty thousand dollars. We're requesting that be approved with a ten percent contingency. There was one other bid, but the glass was not thick enough up to our standard.
Okay, thank you. Um Council, and I'll start with you, Mr. Frazier?
Um when I was reading this, one of the things, if I Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh when I was reading this, one of the things is, it said that there, we needed to rescind the original bid and uh accept this bid. So uh we shouldn't move forward until we uh, till we do that. But uh how thick were the, are, is the glass in those doors anyhow?
You know, from memory, for the um, I think it's a difference between eighth and quarter. The older ones are an eighth and the thicker ones are, are, are not a quarter, twice the thickness. But off the top of my head, I, I just don't wanna quote that. I do realize that our older glasses is about half as thick as the new stuff. And that's our standard. I'll have to get that for you. I don't, I remember it from the barriers, but I just don't wanna try and guess at thicknesses.
Okay, it's not a double, it's not a double pane with gas in the middle or, or anything? It's just thicker glass?
Thicker glass, sir.
And, and is it designed like windshields in a car? So if it breaks, it breaks up into little bu, little pieces rather than in shards?
Well, that would be the side windows on cars, not the windshields. Windshields are made to stay together with a sheet of lexan in the middle. Um but I believe this is just plate glass, and that's why you want it thicker.
Okay. No questions, no more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh no questions for me on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thanks.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, uh John, I'm, I had to step away. I think I, I think you answered this in the opening. Uh what, what was Stanley's uh per, reason for stepping away?
I don't think they gave a specific reason. If this, if they did, it did not filter down to me. But they were about four thousand dollars lower on the cri, price. And what I heard anecdotally was that they really did not properly bid the manual doors. They were great on the electric doors, which is what they do. But when it came to bidding the manual doors, they just could not get a subcontractor to price that as they were hoping.
Okay. Yeah, in my question, I think you might have answered this also. I saw that the um winning bid was six thousand four hundred dollars above what Stanley um had presented. So was that, I assume that was a more accurate bid, um supposedly, I guess?
Well, I, I do think that if Stanley could have done the job and made money, they probably would have completed it. So I would have to agree with that, sir.
Okay. Okay. Um one other thing, what is the um, you know, I probably read about ready this afternoon, and I can't access that right now. What's the completion date on this? The proposed tentative completion date?
Other than I, I know this will be this fiscal year. I'm not certain on that. A lot of suppliers have been a lot more problematic in the past. I, I'd hate to try to guess on that one for certain because they could come back with more delays than we anticipate.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, thanks, John.
Thank you. Um Mayor, do you have any questions?
None for me.
Thank you. Uh city administrator, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh this too will be moved to the uh consent agenda for our next regular meeting?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval to enter a thirty-seven-month contract with CrowdStrike Falcon Endpoint Protection Premium Bundle for protection against computer viruses and malware. Uh and this for the library, Mr. Landa, I believe?
Yes, thank you, Council President, council members. Um the library is looking for permission to license three hundred copies of the CrowdStrike software uh to prevent uh as an antivirus, anti-malware product um to protect uh patron as well as staff uh computers and data from uh from bad actors, pretty much. Uh this would be for a thirty-seven-month term that we would license the software. Uh the software would be replacing our legacy product um which was a, built on an older platform and doesn't really cover everything that we needed it to do. Uh Southfield Library is a member of um the Library Network, uh which is a public library cooperative in Michigan, established in nineteen seventy-seven. And when we started looking for the software, the Library Network was also uh beginning a process to look at um some antivirus software for uh putting together a cooperative, competitive uh contract for all its members. Southfield chose to um become part of that process. So we were uh involved in looking at what uh Library Network was uh, was looking to bid on. They started with uh seven different products. Um narrowed that down to three different products for which um we had demonstrations and competitive bidding. And uh the CrowdStrike product was chosen.
Okay, thank you. Um Council, we'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins, any questions?
Uh no, that seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Nope, let's just keep those hackers out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Um has our um IT director um reviewed this and approved of it also?
Yes, he has.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Does the library have three hundred computers?
Yes, the library has um three hundred computers. If you total the number of public computers, staff computers, laptops, um various tablet computers, uh servers, that there are three hundred devices.
Oh. Sure seems like a lot.
Uh but- It does seem like a lot, but um there are a lot of devices to be protected and a license is needed for each individual, what's called an endpoint, which is the device that will be um protected.
Okay, um. My second question is sort of similar to uh Councilwoman Banks' question. And that is, you know, we've got, you know, tons of computers and electronic devices that need protection around the city. We must have uh firewalls and, and protection against uh the bad people, as you say. Uh why would we have two or three different kinds- why would we have two or three different kinds of protection when it would seem like our, our people would have to learn different technologies to keep us okay?
Well, that, that is an excellent question. Uh, the library specifically was looking for software which would help um, help us protect um, the staff and the public. The library has significant uh, usage by patrons um, coming in to the library or using their own devices, devices of which, you know, we have no control over. So we need a product that's a little bit more uh, robust to deal with that as well as the uh, the staff products. The other compelling reason for us to uh, to go with this product was um, the Library Network was able to uh, accumulate a number of licenses to purchase. Library Network uh, represents seventy-four libraries within southeast Michigan. And they were able to get uh, commitments from sixty-seven libraries who wanted to do this. And there were actually some municipalities as well who did it. So the bargaining power that Library Network had was for o- over five thousand copies, uh, which is significantly uh, a significant number and, gotta say, a very, very competitive price. The, the reason for multiple products is because of the, the different needs um, or the, you know, for the different um, business models that are practiced at the library versus, you know, an office type environment.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this when it, when it comes up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this, but I'd like to ask a question to our City Administrator, and that is, do we have a plan for the city on how to protect all of our electronic devices? That is a documented plan? Or is each group kind of left to their own device?
The, the answer to that question is yes, and I can have Mr. Heno Hosa act on it. Uh, in the last year, we put in a number of additional uh, uh, measures, and that is part of a, a documented strategy, and then we could present that to council.
Well, if you already have, you don't need to do it for me, so. Okay, I ju- I just want to make sure that it's not a patchwork that, you know, every department has its own thing, because that would drive our IT folks nuts trying to keep up with.
Yeah, you know, i- i- if, if I may, Madam President, you know, obviously the autonomy of the library does present challenges uh, to the, to the city. Uh, but whenever these items come through, comes through, we work, work our way through that. We had prior discussions regarding the economics of this. Did it make sense? And uh, and, and, and yes, it does. We, we recognize the library as a very different function than the city. Prior to COVID, the city was very insular. We weren't in a position to open ourselves up from outside entities. Post-COVID, we now at least allow our employees to access from multiple points, and that presents additional security concerns uh, for the, for the city. Uh, but we are in dialogue when these things happen. Mary Bill and Kenny uh, and Renee Heno Hosa and his team uh, do have those dialogues. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ma'am Chair, if I may for a minute?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, early, the idea talked to our um, uh, Information Services Renee earlier about this, and it was about CrowdStrike, um, that firm. Uh, it, it has been in the news, I think within the last, it's a couple of months, when these gigantic um, hacking operations, and Renee, it indicated he was familiar with it, and he has spoken to the um, the gentleman here uh, about that, and so uh, they, they seem to be on top of it. But can you uh, and what is, what is, what is your name again, sir, from the library?
My name is Kenny Landa.
Okay, Kenny, can you give me a little more update? And I understand you are familiar with CrowdStrike and what they, when the news for several months ago?
Um, can you elaborate a little bit more about what exactly?
Yeah, well, it has something to do with the, and I'm, I'm operating on the uh, national news. The hack, the government agencies that were hacked uh, nationwide, you know, the biggest hack of governments, of a lot of governmental agencies. And CrowdStrike, I believe, could have been the one that found that hack, I believe, that, right? That's the way it's coming back to me, but
Okay, I, I believe you are thinking of a uh, a software product called SolarWinds. SolarWinds was the one that was hacked uh, from all the government agencies and, and large businesses.
Okay.
That, that was
So CrowdStrike, Crowd in the news, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, well
Yeah, yeah, it was not, yeah, it was not CrowdStrike that was uh, was breached uh, in, in any kind of breach that would have been large enough to make the news.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Mayor, do you have any comment?
Nothing for me. I think it's a good move.
Thank you. Any additional comments, uh, Administrators, or?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, this will also move forward to our consent agenda on the uh, regular meeting. Thank you very much. Uh, item ten has been pulled, so we'll go to item eleven, which is the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development Reimbursement Agreement for SLT Holdings.
Good evening, Council President, Honorable Board, Mr. Mayor. This is Rochelle Freeman, Business and Economic Development Director for the city. The city is in receipt of a request from SLT Holdings LLC for the new Soul Market for the approval of the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Finance Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement. We are looking to hold a public hearing on October twenty-fifth, and the Brownfield Authority has reviewed this request on September twenty-third. We have a short presentation that I'd like to go over with City Council. Um, so if Wendell, if you could bring that up, that would be great. It's just before this, probably. We do have
I'm sorry, Shelley, it's not in my slide deck.
It's not in your slide deck? Okay, um, well, I would be happy to just go over the items, and, and then we can, um, again, this will be in front of City Council on October twenty-fifth. Um, SLT Holdings is a family-operated small business. They are the owners of the new Soul Garden Plaza, which is home to two Korean restaurants, um, and they created seventy-five jobs at that location, and they've been in business for over thirty years. They're looking to purchase two seven five two two Northwestern Highway, which is the former Copper Canyon property. Um, the Copper Canyon has been vacant since two thousand and fourteen, and has been deemed to be functionally obsolete, which would allow them to uh, utilize our Brownfield Redevelopment Program. They're looking to renovate this property, which is nine thousand four hundred and forty square feet, and build a high-end international marketplace at that location. They also plan on doing an addition of over five thousand square feet to that space. Their goal is to create an Energy Star compliant um, refrigeration equipment, which is equipped with French doors to maximize the aisles and access efficiency, add LED lighting fixtures installed on the doorway entrances and parking areas, the installation of garage doors to integrate outdoor marketplace spaces during the warmer months. They'll, they plan on adding four EV electric charging stations for electric vehicles, um, creating new uh, landscaping, which will reduce the stormwater, um, upgrade all the landscaping at the location, and convert the extra sixteen parking spaces to outdoor eatery. This is a six point three million dollar endeavor, and they plan on adding an additional fifty-one jobs to the location. This is Brownfield eligible because the property is functionally obsolete. They're planning on doing about um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of internal demolition, removal of asbestos, uh, making infrastructure improvements, site preparation, um, activities, um, all totaling five hundred and nine thousand twenty-nine dollars, which would include a fifteen percent contingency. They'll also, they'll also be able to um, build up our uh, uh, local Brownfield Redevelopment Fund by adding a hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, and the city will, the Brownfield Authority will receive a seventy-three dolla- seventy-three thousand dollar administrative fee. This project will have a twenty-four year reimbursement um, capture, which includes the local Brownfield revolving fund. Um, again, we are looking to hold a public hearing on October twenty-fifth, and we'd like this to go on the consent agenda for the eighteenth. Uh, do you have any questions on this item?
Uh, I will open it up to council. I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Um, Shelley, I've noticed that they've already started working on, on demolition and everything. Does that um, take away from the, from the Brownfield? I thought that they usually couldn't start construction before it was approved.
There is a certain amount of time for a lookback period, and again, the Brownfield Authority has approved this item. They do run the risk if the city does not approve the Brownfield, that obviously they're not going to be reimbursed for the investments that they've made, but they, it is permissible. Yes.
Okay.
And they, they had, um, they had concerns about getting some of the exterior work done prior to um, the bad weather coming.
No, I get it. I, I think this will be a great addition to our city, so um, I'm okay with that. I just was wondering about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. Didn't they come before us um, s- several months back regarding the International Store?
Um, there is a representative from STL Holdings, Rebecca Lazarus, is on the line. Um, perhaps there has been discussions um, about this project. We did assist them when they rebuilt the, the old um, new Soul Garden Restaurants, and we assisted them with a PA two-ten um, as they rebuilt the facility. They had intended on putting the market behind the, the restaurant. The restaurant has been so successful that they plan on coming back next year to expand the footprint of the restaurant. And they also were, had been unable in the past to secure Copper Canyon. Since they were able to pick up this property and its exposure to the freeway and the roadway is much greater, it makes more sense to be in that location.
Um, okay, um, it, it sounds exciting. Usually, what is the payback, though, for the Brownfield? Do we, do we, have we done twenty-four year reimbursements before?
Yes, so um, this is a local only, so the city will only be capturing the local taxes. And so they typically, our Brownfield plans have had a longer life. Um, and depending on the starting value of the property when the project starts, that's, you know, we, we capture the incremental change of the dollars that we're already capturing. And I, I would like to add, and this is for a, a later discussion, I was gonna bring it up, but the owners of this property will be looking for a, a, to freeze the value like we did for the other property. Um, and they want to come back next year for that request, which is also permissible. So it's, you know, those different factors cause that twenty-four year payback for the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, I agree that I think this is exciting. Um, I frequent their present location and enjoy it, and um, I guess I misunderstood about the market. I didn't realize, you know, it was originally gonna go in back for some reason. Not sure where I thought it was. So I think this will be a wonderful compliment to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I'm supportive of, of this project. I've been supportive of it since its um, inception and also with the original um, change. So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, um, I know uh, two or three years ago, we were talking about improving Eleven Mile Road and putting wayfinding signs and things on there uh, to help people that are on a freeway find the place on, on uh, Eleven Mile Road. Uh, where do we stand on that?
We are um, looking for options. It's very challenging with, with the amount of signage that's already in existence and some of the changes that have been occurring um, with some of the property owners. So we are still exploring options for creating better signage. We've um, talked to um, our planning department, we talked to one of the planning consultants that we've used for the um, Centropolis District, and um, because of the big obstacles with the, with the freeway and just the way the roadway is, it's trying to find a good fit. It's been challenging, so we're still working on it.
Any uh, any breakthroughs expected, or?
Well, I, we definitely hope to have a break, breakthrough in that, you know, this new marketplace um, is going to be a huge draw as well for the area. Um, I think the new roadways that have been put in place have helped um, create a sense of place, and SLT Holdings has a long-term vision for the property, which will also help create um, give us a better means to create signage to direct people to the area.
Yeah, when, for the people that live in the area, you know, the second time they go there, it's not a problem. But if someone is from out of town and they're driving down the road and they see the sign, oh, that sounds like something I'd like to do. You know, if it's impossible for them to find, you know, they end up going to Wendy's or something, you know?
Sure, sure, but with the turnover of some of the other properties in the area, um, with the Plant Moran Building being in the process of being repositioned, um, you know, we thought we would try and work with all the stakeholders in that, that strip.
Okay, all right. I think it's, it's a, sounds like a good plan.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking forward to this uh, getting going.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm extremely um, pleased that uh, this is finally moving forward. And actually, I think it's going to be larger than what was originally envisioned with the market behind uh, New Soul Garden. Uh, I'm also um, uh, pleased as um, many others are in the community that something's finally happening to this uh, site. It's been an eyesore for a long time. Uh, I'm wondering if I may ask a question uh, through the chair to Rebecca Lazarus?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm here.
Rebecca, good evening.
Good evening.
When we, I, I know when we've talked before uh, about the gourmet market, um, that um, it's not going to be strictly Asian food, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be a international Asian market.
Wonderful. And secondly, um, a- a- and one of the reasons I'm very excited about this is it's another uh, food shopping option for Southfield residents, uh, and obviously beyond. Uh, my other question um, uh, to Rebecca is, will there be Uh my other question um uh to Rebecca is, will there be uh prepared foods um to take out? Like at other gar- gourmet markets?
Abs- absolutely. We are putting a small um kitchen, prep kitchen in the um in the back area to actually make fresh um items that can be taken home or eaten off-premise for quick lunches, that kind of things, like sushi, um kimbap, um different different um prepared banchons that you can actually get at the restaurant across the street.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to this.
Thank you. Uh City Administrator Zorn?
Uh yes, Madam President. We just want to comment on Councilman Frazier's uh comments. As recently as a week and a half ago, Ms. Freeman, we're discussing the wayfinding with we we frankly, we need to figure out a way to bring a consultant in. Uh that opportunity to link the city center to Centropolis is too valuable. We do have uh capital investment going down along that stretch of uh Northwestern there, but to better identify and create a brand identity um linking that corridor. And we do have some uh TIF and LDFA monies that we will uh soon uh be closing out that could be a possible funding source for that. Well, that is high on our priority list. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I also I would like to apologize that the presentation wasn't available, and I will make sure that City Council receives it um tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing no other questions, we will move this to our regular meeting for a public hearing on October twenty-fifth.
Um to get oh, we're gonna put on the eighteenth for consent, please.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But the hearing is the twenty-fifth, correct, Shelley?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh Council, our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the special use request for um enterprise leasing over on uh Telegraph and Garner Street.
Hello again, this is Planner Crowe. Um can we go to the next slide, please? Uh again, the council has seen um seen this in a a couple of different ways. Uh first, the council approved an amendment to the zoning district to allow for special land use of um rental leasing companies. And there was a preliminary presentation done earlier on on this concept plan. But uh tonight, um we're discussing the special land use request officially um to locate an automobile and truck leasing and rental offices in existing I- one industrial district. And this is a study session prior to a public hearing that's scheduled for October twenty-fifth. Next slide. And as stated, um this has been a vacant site um that we've we've had a a number of um potential requests over the last decade. Nothing has come to fruition. It's located at the corner of Telegraph Road and Gardner Street. Next slide. Uh currently, it's zoned I-one, and it's planned for Telegraph Road corridor subarea. Next slide. Uh this is a concept site site plan um for uh two brand-new buildings. One is the um actual leasing facility. The other is uh prep repair area. Um they will be maintaining their existing site on on North Telegraph, and we have representatives from um Enterprise that can tell you a little bit about their strategy. But um the concept is to move their leasing portion of their business here on on the corner of Garner and Telegraph Road. Next slide. And uh this is just a little more detailed site plan. One of the issues that did come up through Planning Commission was the open retention detention pond. And because it doesn't need the three-on-one slope, uh it needs to be fenced in, and they have worked with our department to provide decorative fencing uh around the pond, so it's more attractive uh from Telegraph Road. It also protects um potential harm of any students that might be traveling to the charter school located immediately to the west. Next slide. Uh these are some elevations. They have um decorative stone uh at the base of their buildings. Uh and showing you their um various elevations. Next slide. And this is their acc- accessory repair prep building. Next slide. So um with that, uh I believe we have Allison and um Ashby Donahue representing Enterprise if you want to make any opening comments and then be available to answer questions from the council. Thank you.
Hi, this is Ashby.
Oh, go ahead, Ashby.
Oh, go ahead. I was gonna let know your beauty. Go ahead, Allison. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Good evening, Honorable Counsel. Uh thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal to develop the vac- vacant parcel in Southfield in the corner of Garner and Telegraph. Uh Enterprise proposes to develop this three acres plus parcel with two buildings, one thirty-four hundred plus square feet, the other forty-two hundred square feet plus um for their truck and car rental operations due to the growth in the city of Southfield. The project has received preliminary or, excuse me, uh Planning Commission approval, and we respectfully request City Council approval. Uh we've worked with staff, as mentioned, to address some of the issues of fencing and landscaping that have been uh brought to our attention. And we're here this evening to address any uh issues that council may have or questions.
And and just for the record, um Allison, Planning Commission made a recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, sorry.
Council is the ultimate um body that does approve.
Yep.
And then um there'll be a separate site plan internally, because this is an industrial district. But um council is considering the special land use request, and the public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask and I'll um turn it over to council, and I'll start with you, uh Councilwoman Banks.
Um I don't think I have any questions. I think this is gonna be a good use for this particular um parcel of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Uh yeah, there uh to the planner, uh there's a particularly cranky person that lives on Garner Street that uh is uh interested in anything anything that goes up and down Garner Street. So he's well aware of the fact that the uh factory that was there a long time ago uh left and so I get a telephone call periodically uh reminding me that uh it's in near my neighborhood. Um so I don't know if you've talked with him or not uh to let him know that something is gonna to uh take place on that corner. But um uh he's been quiet, pretty quiet lately. I'm sure that the first shovel's full of dirt. He'll be uh making telephone calls or or saying things. But the other question I have is, and I know this is for zoning, but is this where the cars and trucks are gonna be rented from when this is all done?
That that's correct, and um again, uh Ashby, if um I've asked you to just talk a little bit to the council about your overall strategy where the existing site's gonna become an office uh center and that the leasing facilities where the trucks and cars will be rented will be on the new the new site. If you could give the council just an overview of that, please.
Yeah, sure. No problem. Today, we currently um operate on Telegraph Road um about a mile away um with the ex- um the increase in demand and the growth in Southfield. We've outgrown that specific site, so um this is why we're coming to this location, also looking to incorporate the truck um business line into this and develop a three-acre site where we can grow into and stay for a long time. Because this will be our second move on Telegraph Road in the past five years, so looking for a long-term permanent home. Um the existing site that we have um Enterprise, like a lot of places, has had to do some restructuring, moving of uh departments, administrative functions around. Our corporate headquarters for the state of Michigan is located in Farmington Hills um on the corner of Middle Belt and Grand River. Um so this location is actually the closest physical brick building that we have to that location. And with some of our reconsolidation and whatnot, we need space for administrative functions. So the plan would be is to no longer rent vehicles out of this location, but use it as an offset or an offshoot administrative function for our corporate office for the state of Michigan.
Okay. Um I don't have any other questions. Uh I just want to make sure that uh when my telephone rings, it's not gonna be an irate neighbor. But no.
Just, you know, not 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 to belabor this too much, Mr. Frazier, but uh that gentleman was actually on our Planning Commission meeting, made public comment earlier on, and then, for whatever reason, dropped off and did not speak when this item came up. So I I would imagine we will hear from him.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Hoskins?
Um uh no, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um the only the only thought I have, and and maybe this will be done through the site plan, is um and it looks like there is greenery along Garner Street um as well as fencing. I think that maybe, you know, if we could add additional uh greenery or or trees, that may also help some of those re- residents um feel more like a neighborhood rather than a a factory or or building is next door, just just a a comment, that's all. But other than that, I think this is a great use for the land.
If you if if I could just address that for a moment, uh you notice there are no curb cuts on Garner Street? We also um we we instituted this years ago, but wherever parking is located adjacent to the right-of-way, we require a minimum of thirty-inch evergreen hedge or screen. And so they have provided both fencing and hedging along Telegraph Road as well as Gardner Street. So this this landscape plan, even though it's conceptually shown here, will greatly enhance the aesthetics and uh and the quality of a place al- along Gardner Street.
All right, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Mayor, did you have any questions or comments?
Uh no, I don't. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And City Administrator?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing nothing else, this will be on the consent agenda next week and a public hearing on October twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another planning item? If we can go to the next slide, please?
Yes.
Wendell, are you able to? Thank you. Um so our next item, again, um council had seen uh this a- and as a pre- preliminary prior to the official application being submitted, but um our next item is presentation and discussion regarding rezoning request of the Alco. Um the current Hawthorne Suites Hotel uh located at two-six-seven-zero-zero Central Park Boulevard on the southeast corner of Central Park Boulevard and West eleven mile road. Uh they are looking to utilize the overlay development district to basically convert transient uh hotel stay uh into permanent residential community. Next slide. Uh again, um the location uh is shown there in red. Missioners Bonner Advisory Group, uh he'll be joining us shortly. And um their proposed project name is the Al Cove. Next slide. Uh here's a close-up of the existing facilities. Next slide. And uh proposed site plan, there'll be um extensive re-landscaping and placemaking along Central Park Boulevard. Uh we'll have a completely different feel and look as well as the um boundary that they share with the current condominium association. We um have met collectively with the president and the homeowners group to address some of their concerns about lighting and screening and and some of the current issues that exists with the extended stay hotel. Um next slide. Uh this is a a little more detailed um landscaping plan, but it shows extensive uh beautification and um screening, removal of dead growth and trees. Um they're providing additional pedestrian lighting, benches, trash receptacles that will all match and complement the city center's um streetscape. Uh we we did an extensive walk through the site, made some recommendations on some of their common areas and uh where they can improve the overall aesthetics of the site. Next slide. And with that, Mr. Bonner, with the chair's permission, I'll let you go through these next slides to talk about some of the additional architectural and other upgrades to the facility. And then Mr. Bonner and his group and myself will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Again, this is discussion purposes only tonight. Uh public hearing has been scheduled for October twenty-fifth for your consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Terry, and uh good evening, uh members of the council. I appreciate being here. Um my name is Luke Bonner with the Bonner Advisory Group. Uh we're also joined by Brian Pritchard, CEO and owner of Tricap Residential, Rob Sanchez, who's uh Executive Vice President of Asset Management. And I do believe Wayne Chubb, our um architect from Howson Black, is also on. Um but I can't see can't see everybody, so that's just a big, big shot in the dark that he's on there. Um yeah, we have um we we've had a great experience um going through this process uh with with Terry and Jeff Spence. Um and what makes this process even better is that we've been able to work with um Evergreen Meadows. Um we've spent a lot of time with Elizabeth Wilson. Uh we've walked the site a number of times there, and then also with Terry and Jeff last week as well. And I gotta be honest with you, I think w- we we've incorporated every comment and every request um that Terry and Jeff has had and also Elizabeth um has had. And, you know, ultimately, at the end, it makes the project even better um than what we thought it could be. Um I know that, you know, from previous Planning Commission meeting and previous discussion with City Council, uh we've received a lot of support, at least publicly, um from both bodies, um that that this was gonna be a great project. And like I said, now we've added a number of elements. Um because we are in the O D D district, there's a number of elements that we can now add to help um to help add to the district overall and its mission and goals um as well. Um uh these slides right here are just a couple of examples of the changes aesthetically that are gonna be made. You know, obviously, the property is in um fairly tough shape right now. We're gonna be adding a significant amount of landscaping. Um some of that you saw in the landscape plan already. Um but it was suggested to us early on, just in terms of the types of materials that we use. Um this is uh the clubhouse, for example. Uh we have some stone on the clubhouse. Um our intent is actually to make uh the clubhouse more of a focal point on Central Park Boulevard. Right now, it's kind of hidden um by some dying pine trees and the fence. Um but also using a number of different um color palettes um throughout the community um to kind of break some of the buildings up from one another. Um you know, having said that, I just, y- you know, uh want to reiterate our appreciation for the amount of time and effort that Elizabeth has put in from the condo association and and Jeff and and Terry as well. Um with that, I actually want to reintroduce Brian Pritchard to you guys, and I know Brian can talk more specifics about um the company again, just kind of a refresher about Tricap Residential and the work that they've done and what the ultimate plan is here.
Thanks, Luke. I appreciate the opportunity. Um just to reiterate, you know, I we very much appreciate uh being able to work with the uh with Southfield on this project. We're very excited about how it has evolved and matured since when we when we had our initial presentation. Um a little bit about us, we are a fifteen-plus-year-old business. I'm actually the the founder and and CEO of the company. Um I am a Michigan native. Uh I live in Ann Arbor, Michigan. I was I was born.
I was, I was born and raised in the state of Michigan as well, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the area. Um, the company, I'll, I'll just give you a, a quick overview. Um, we own a little over three thousand apartments. We're predominantly in the Midwest. Um, we're currently active in seven states, and we are an owner and, and operator of apartments, which means, um, we don't operate anything we don't own, and we don't own anything that we don't operate it. So, uh, anybody that works at one of our communities, from leasing and property management staff down to the maintenance staff, they're all employees of our company, and we think that's very important for us to deliver a, a high caliber, uh, experience for our, for our residents and make sure we s- we stay and, uh, have great working relationships with our, with our neighbors. Um, we have about seventy-five employees, uh, and like I said, a little over three thousand apartments. Um, uh, and if there's any questions that the council has for me about, about the company or the project specifically, I'm happy to address them.
If, if, if we could, Luke, let's just see if there's any more slides. There's, there's another one if you want to comment in any of these.
Yeah, sure, I can, uh, I can do that. So the, the top right slide is, um, the, well, the top two slides. Um, top left is current conditions of the clubhouse. And then if you look at the rendering in the top right, uh, that's what I was talking about in terms of actually making the clubhouse more of a focal point. So tearing down the fence, um, removing the, the pine trees, which are in pretty rough shape, uh, replacing landscaping, um, all along the building line. You know, creating some windows, so creating more of a presence instead of blocking that off, which it is right now, which I think opens that whole community up to the street, uh, in a much more productive way. And then, um, another example of how we used a couple of different colors. Like, I know we have the, uh, the stonework on the top, and then we use like a blue, uh, material, for example, on the rendering in the bottom right-hand corner of this. Um, again, just to give you a sense of the landscaping improvement that'll be done, um, the painting, um, the materials and, and that sort of thing in terms of an overall aesthetic refresher to the property that's gonna, it's gonna make it pop pretty nicely.
You go to the next slide, please? Do you want to talk a little bit about your, your floor plan concept?
Yeah, th- this is actually a floor plan of the clubhouse. I'll let, um, Rob or Brian, um, talk about this, if that's okay.
Sure, uh, it's Rob Sanchez, I'm happy to describe the, the, the beauty of, uh, of having a hotel is the amenities are, are somewhat in place, so we're trying to utilize as much of the existing amenity base there, uh, at, at the property. But that said, with the size of the units and with the, you know, with the way the world has moved today, with a lot of work from home and people working from home, we see a lot of professionals working out of, out of these units, um, and needing a place outside of their immediate unit to go and work, uh, uh, you know, on a day-to-day basis. So we're, we're looking to have both this kind of compilation of both amenity base that people go and, and have allowance, but also a place that they can go step, step, set outside their unit and, and work from home. So, and the, kind of to the right side of that, you'll see some laundry machines in the top right as just kind of a point of reference. And outside of that is some of, of work-from-home kind of s- section that we're going to place in, in the, in the, uh, in the building. Both as, you know, you're waiting for your laundry to get done, also a place to reside and work, but also a place during the day that you can get seated on or work. The configuration, the furniture is kind of showing more of a traditional model. We're looking, uh, probably more, more sort of a modern approach. We're movable furniture that can create partitions, set aside, so you can work on your laptop, talk on the phone, and, and still be part of the community there. And in the rest of the space, as you look toward the top left, more traditional, uh, model of having somewhat of a lounge or seating area that you can meet with your neighbors. And, uh, we show pool table, but we'll probably have some more recreational type elements within the, in the space. That's effectively what we're trying, and in as well as a, mentioned, a gym toward the bottom or to the, to the left, uh, of the property or of the building there. So really trying to accommodate a significant number of amenities to, to attract that professional to, to have that work-play kind of lifestyle.
Next slide, please?
Oh, here's just more examples of, um, the differing types of colors that we would use, um, on the units. Um, you know, we have a palette of gray, blue, and I believe some green. Um, everything's going to completely be repainted, re-landscaped. Um, everything will be practically brand-new from the exterior standpoint.
One of our goals was not to make a homogeneous color palette that every building looks exactly the same. I think this is going to add a lot more character and diversity to, to the development. Next slide.
Uh, another example of the clubhouse, uh, you know, multiple viewpoints here. Again, using, uh, using brick accents, or I'm sorry, with the stone accents, um, a- around the majority of the building. Uh, just to differentiate it, make it more of a focal point from the actual residential units themselves.
Next slide. So with that, um, Madam Chair, turn it back over to council for any questions that the, the team can answer as well as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a nice, uh, presentation. A lot of information here as well. Uh, council, I'm going to start with you, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, what happens to the people that are currently living there while you're doing these renovations?
Yeah, I'll, I'll adjust that. So it's currently being operated as a hotel with, with really no long-term stay. And so when we, uh, close on the asset, it will be de-hotelled or de-flagged, and that it will also be vacant.
Uh, you plan to, to work on all of the, uh, buildings at the same time?
No, we will phase the, the, the renovation, but not, we will not operate it as a hotel or as an apartment community until we've renovated, uh, you know, clubhouse and sort of building by building. Then we'll start to re-occupy and lease the property.
Okay. Um, on the exterior, um, facing, uh, the service drive, um, are you going to be replacing that fencing as well?
The, the one immediately?
Do you want to address that?
Yes, the one immediately facing the drive in front of the clubhouse?
Um, no.
The, um, this, the top of the slide, um, is the service drive. And we did walk, we did walk back off from Mandelbaum and made some suggestions of everything from repairing broken flagged sidewalk to repairing the fencing and adding, uh, a, a bench and trash receptacle as well as some pedestrian lighting. So, um, there was a number of areas where the perimeter fencing had been damaged, uh, internally or exterior, and they made a commitment to make sure that those were repaired and repainted and, uh, looked nice as part of their overall development.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I, I think this is, this, this property definitely needs a nice, uh, upgrade and facelift and, um, from what I see from your drawings, uh, I'm, I'm excited for this, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
And if I could just point out on the upper left-hand corner, they've incorporated one of our little urban pedestrian classes, um, that you can find in other areas of, of the district.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, approximately how large are the apartments going to be?
The existing, there are two, uh, sized units there. The, the smaller, uh, the unit is about approximately about five hundred square feet, and the larger is, is slightly over eight hundred square feet. And the proportionate share is about a hundred, hundred and eight of the smaller units and thirty-six of the larger units.
And these are all one-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're, they might, the, the smaller ones are to be considered studio slash one-bedrooms.
Okay. Um, to planner Crowe, um, is, do you, is there a demand for, um, studio-type units like this?
Uh, th- there are, and I'll, I'll let them kind of address a little bit of the marketing and the, the potential rents. Um, you know, I equate this to, uh, if you have an evergreen tree, you have different species of birds living at different parts of the tree. And we, as you know, council has approved some new construction at, uh, Arbor Loft. Um, Mr. Jawad's Development has both, um, walk-up townhomes and some multifamily. And this is a different niche that is market rate, um, based on, on the location. Um, I, I believe, uh, this will be servicing, um, single working professionals, um, maybe a young started couples, and, and maybe some, um, senior persons that are, are downsizing. But it's, it's about, uh, less maintenance. Uh, this is a trend that we're seeing across the country. The rental market's very hot because the housing supply for single-family homes is, is short and, and, uh, with the COVID, construction costs and construction workers, there's high demand for this type of, um, of living. And if, gentlemen, if you want to add, add to that based on what, what you expect to rent these out and, and the, your mark, target market?
Ryan, do you want to lead or reject me?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, we are, you know, seeking probably, uh, rents in the, in the lower nine hundred to, uh, lower, uh, or sorry, nine hundred's about eleven hundred dollars per, per month. Um, is, I think Terry expressed it really very well, is there's a, a significant movement, and we've seen it even, it was prior to COVID, and, and we continue to see this going forward, is a need, a, a desire for residents to have smaller resident, uh, smaller homes that, because it's not, they're not wanting to be at home and tied up, particularly with COVID and coming out of COVID, they definitely don't want to be sitting at home. So they're just, they're looking for a place to, to reside, to sleep, but they're looking to, to go out and, you know, either go to work, if they go to, if they go to an office or just have a place to go, you know, they want to leave and go somewhere else. So we're really seeing that people are looking for affordable units. And I say affordable, people think lower income, but that's not necessarily the case. We're talking professionals looking to spend more of their money on travel and entertainment and not necessarily on their home, on their homestead. So they're looking for an affordability element on that end so that they can spend more money on, on going out. So this trend is, is net national, and we see it continue going forward into perpetuity. And it's particularly with the, the limited, uh, housing stock, particularly in the single-family homes, and particularly for those that are single and, uh, and or elderly looking to downsize, who don't want the big, the big homes, uh, going forward. So we really find that this trend is going to continue to be strong going forward.
If, if I could add, um, besides the clubhouse improvements, there are some around the pool and the outdoor seating area, cook area. I believe they're converting an existing either basketball court to a dog park. Uh, and also they've said, said to me, um, it's the walkability of the city center district. You've got the municipal facilities, the library, the athletic facilities, the golf course, and, uh, several park, pucks and trails all within a quarter mile of this facility. So, um, people are, are downsizing, but they want to have the public and private amenities within walking distance. And I think this site does afford that.
Uh, I agree. Where is the pool located? Did you say a swimming pool?
Yes, it's, it's, um, the, the largest building in the center adjacent to Central Park is the clubhouse. And just to the right of that, in the gray area is their pool. And the other rectangular, um, gray area is an outdoor seating area that they're planning on doing some upgrades to.
Thank you. And I know this is a, um, rezoning request, but, um, can I ask about the inside of the units or not now?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, this, this is our discussion point, so yeah.
Okay. Um, are you planning to have, um, like hardwood floors, um, granite countertops? Or what is the inside of the units, um, when you renovate them going to look like?
Well, fortunately, the existing owner has, uh, is, we've been benefited by them upgrading the units, uh, as we speak. So they're nearing the completion of that. And there's that, there's photos online, if you look at the Hawthorne Suites, but the finishes are more modern. Uh, they have some tile floors. They have, what we'll be changing, um, is the carpeting and drapery that looks more like a hotel. Will we, will, will we say de-hotelling it? Removing those items, changing the carpet in the majority of the li- living areas to a laminate floor, um, preserving the majority of the finishes, because they've done a fantastic job on the interiors recently. So the, the appliances are, you're seeing standard apartments. The, um, countertops are, I apologize, are escaping me. I believe they are laminate, um, at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. Um, I think you answered my questions. I think it's an exciting project. Um, this little corner of the city definitely needs some help, and this will be a, a wonderful improvement. Thank you.
If I could, Robert and your team, maybe you can provide us a couple photos or illustrations that we can incorporate into the public hearing presentation?
We will do so if that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
I'm, I'm comfortable with this project. Um, I had a lot of questions last time out, and I do feel that, um, the the gentleman of Brian, um, trends, the modern trends to our city at this particular time. So I, I look forward to this project being fully developed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, did I misunderstand that the laundry equipment's going to be in the clubhouse?
No, you're not. That is correct. The, the rooms themselves, the, the units themselves do not have their own laundry facilities. So the laundry facilities will be, uh, located within the clubhouse itself.
Okay, uh, so I presume you'll have more than one washer and dryer for this size of a?
Correct. We work with our laundry providers that we have at our other properties, and they, based on the unit count there and the type of, uh, uh, individual we believe that live there, they will provide us, uh, from their experience, a number of washers and dryers most likely, and they probably six to eight count of prepare for repairs.
And will that be part of the, the rent? Or are they going to be coin-operated?
There will be, uh, there'll be, uh, there'll be oper- a coin-operated equivalent. Uh, we don't use the coins, there's a, you, you process, but yes, they'll be, uh, they'll be paid, paid to use.
Okay. Okay, uh, the other question that I have is, uh, how many of the units will be ADA handicap, uh, accessible?
There is one building that, uh, Wayne, do you know off the top of my head, or am I confusing my two properties? Um, I'm sure, Wayne, if you knew the top, if there was like, perhaps about eight?
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, six, six, six units stick to the top of my head. And, uh, it's, it's two percent of the, the units is, um, what will have in the finish to meet code.
Okay, so they'll have, uh, wider doors and, and other things that meet the, the code?
Yeah, actually, all the units pretty much meet the, um, majority of the requirements. Where the upgrades tend to be is in the toilet room to make sure that we have the appropriate, uh, turning radius and grab bars, uh, locations to meet the current codes and such.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. I'm just curious, um, how many, uh, parking spots will there be for, per unit?
Effectively, there'll be one per unit. We'll have, uh, on the ratio, slightly more than that to accommodate visitors, but, uh, the, the, we'll be dedicating on an operational basis, one per unit.
Okay, will there be any covered parking?
There will not be at this time now.
Okay. All right, well, most of my questions were answered earlier. Uh, and I'm, uh, uh, too, I'm also, uh, excited about this project. And that's all the questions I have.
Thank you for your questions and comments, council. Uh, Mayor, do you have any thing you'd like to add?
No, my questions were answered. Thank you.
And, uh, Administrator Zorn? Okay, well, hearing none, this will be on our, uh, October twenty-fifth for the public hearing?
That's correct, and, uh, we, we will continue working with their team to finalize the details prior to your public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Our next, our next, thank you, thank you, uh. Our next item is the authorization to enter into the fee agreement for the candidate referral services?
Good evening, Madam President. This is Austin Michaels, Director of Fiscal Services.
Hi, Austin.
We are seeking council's authorization to enter into a fee agreement with Robert Haff of Southfield to help us find an accountant. Uh, we have previously, uh, had a successful relationship with them. We got a great candidate. Unfortunately, after six months with the city, his life circumstances changed and he had to resign his position. Uh, we have been diligently trying to fill that position since April unsuccessfully. So we are once again looking to use, uh, Robert Haff of Southfield, and they have agreed to keep the lowered fee of twenty-five percent of the base salary of the candidate, uh, rather than their standard fee of thirty-five percent, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Uh, counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for this item? And I'll start with you, um, Councilwoman Banks. Um, yes, thank you. Um, Austin, when we contract with these companies, isn't there usually a clause that the individual has to remain in the position for X number of months, otherwise they have to reimburse the city um for the fees that were paid, you know, for their position?
That is a great question. And yes, um, with this agreement, it's ninety days.
Okay, so when they ha- when they found the first person, it was ninety days?
Correct.
So that was three months.
Yep.
Is ninety day, I guess for some reason I was thinking six months.
Yeah, that that's not uh, that's not their standard. Um, and really after three months, uh, we can, we can generally tell if someone's going to be a successful candidate or not. Um, in in this case, um, you know, the accountant, his partner moved to Alaska and it was either the job or Al- or his partner and so he moved to Alaska.
Okay.
But he he was very qualified and a very good worker.
Okay, um, that was my only question. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Um, no questions. I'm familiar with the company and they are very good places. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Now, question, how long did it take them to find uh the candidate that they did, they did find?
Um, you know, I can't remember exactly how long it took for um for us to hire him, but as they are a staffing firm, um, as soon as I uh contact them and say councils approve this, they're going to send me candidates. They will, they will start sending over resumes immediately and they just keep sending them until we find somebody that that works.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't a matter of no one was out there, they had to go, you know, dig them up, but uh, it was just our choice in picking the right candidate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because in the in the write-up says in the meantime, you're uh spending unexpected overtime to uh cover the the loss of that employee.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
No questions.
Thank you. And our city administrators on?
This is Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, uh, hearing no other questions, this will move to our consent agenda and uh thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Our next item is the proposed vacation of the consent judgments for the Trow Bridge uh civi- uh on Civic Center Drive, the former McDonald Three uh properties.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Dawn King from the City Attorney's Office. I want to do an introduction and I believe I will have someone from Con- Contour on the line, but first I just, I know we've brought this before council several times and I just thought it'd be appropriate to put a little introduction. Um, as we all know, this is properly located on Civic Center between Telegraph and Berg Road and it actually goes back to nineteen eighty one, going into nineteen eighty two, where there was a rezoning request from William Booth uh to rezon that property from single family R two uh to the multifamily residential. Basically going from single to mid-rise, mid-rise, I'm sorry, mid-rise. And it was gonna be six stories. Um, also, there was some discussion about the senior ordinance that would apply and at the time it was sixty two and there's a request to change that from fifty. So then by September, October nineteen eighty two, Mr. Booth brought a friendly lawsuit related to uh his rezoning requests. Um, his request was really for senior condominiums, a project for condominiums and in the uh end, it was resolved with the consent judgment in Oakland County Circuit Court. However, as we all know, the project for the senior condominiums was never built, but the consent judgment remained in force and effect along for development of senior housing. Uh, then we fast forward November nineteen eighty two, there was another consent judgment. Um, well, actually, that was the first consent judgment, I'm sorry. And actually, what happened is from the time that the lawsuit was filed, uh, the planners, City Attorney's Office were working uh together and council did approve that first uh consent judgment. Now in eighty seven, uh, that was the first consent judgment. Um, that's when it went from McDonald Three to what we now know as Trow Bridge. Uh, was became a senior citizens complex, but also with tax abatements. Um, as you all may be familiar with the Helping Hands, uh, Rent to Assistance, um, things of that nature which are no longer uh in force. Then there was another amendment and it continued to now where we get to two thousand two and uh the areas there were rezoned from R two to what we call Regional Center District. And although there was a consent judgment that stated we remain R two, um, because the project for the senior condominium was never uh completed or developed, I noticed in our minutes, there was nothing that addressed that and that area is actually Regional Center District, which of course, as you all know, is high-rise, office, high-rise, multiple family hotels, motels. Um, and then it's combined with secondary retail and service uses. So then we move forward and now we are in the place where um Contour has purchased the property over the last several years because there was no longer the tax abatement. Helping Hands had no longer been in effect. We still have these consent judgments and over the past several years, we knew that the prior owner uh really may not have um developed the property or continued for the property to be used as it was initially, even though it wasn't senior condominiums, it was still senior housing. So over the last year, our office um has been working with Contour uh working on a fourth amendment to a consent judgment and just like in the beginning back in nineteen eighty two when the uh friendly lawsuit, I don't know if you want to call it friendly, but nevertheless, the lawsuit was resolved with consent judgment. So today you all received a consent judgment. Um, right now, I think we are pretty much at a place where it's finalized. I will let Contour speak on it in further details and let them answer questions. And they will also confirm what I'm going to tell you in the recent consent judgment that you received today because I know that we've been working on it and we're just trying to keep council informed. Uh, section four of the most recent one you received today, I believe, is going to be deleted. Um, but before I go any further, I'm going to turn this over to any representatives that may be on the line from Contour. So I will wait to see if they're on before any questions are asked.
Good, good, good evening, council members. Good evening, Madam President. Thank you, Dawn, for that um uh history lesson that goes back uh longer than I've been alive, I believe. So uh, I appreciate that and uh actually it gave me some more insight and knowledge of the property. Uh, we are here, uh, like Dawn mentioned, uh, after I'd say six to eight months of going back and forth uh uh to try to uh realizes uh vacant, uh vacation of this uh consent judgment to start some improvements on this beautiful property on Civic Center Drive. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Paul, our attorney, uh Paul Bargaiman, if you're on. Um, you could maybe dive in a little deeper on this and we'd love to answer any questions you guys may have.
Did Paul call in for my number? Uh, because I don't see him on the call.
I I believe so. Um, if not, um, I could answer any questions.
Do you know his number? Because we we have some attendees that I don't. I just need the phone number to undo.
Uh, uh, he's a seven three four number.
I got it. I got it. Thank you. Paul, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and I also uh wanted to uh uh echo Mr. Doug Lukas' sentiment about the the history lesson that Dawn gave. Um, as you know, we had talked to the council before about this property and amending the uh consent judgment so that it uh more accurately reflects um the current times and the current uh usage of the uh of the of the property. Um, we talked uh in early September um about the uh the different uh things that we were looking to to amend, one being the the property is currently age restricted at fifty eight and over, but the current federal standard is fifty five, so we were looking to change that. Uh, we were looking to also uh get rid of the four hundred uh seat dining room, especially in light of the the COVID times, we really didn't feel like that that would be something that would be uh utilized very much going forward. Um, and we would then have a plan to convert that large dining area into additional units uh which we're looking to do as well. Uh, one of the questions that came up when we spoke a few weeks ago uh had to deal with um back taxes and and backwater bill. Um, and at the time, uh, you know, the taxes were in uh process of being paid and and they were paid timely, which I believe you have confirmed. Uh, and also on that tax bill were the uh uh water charges from the uh pri- prior regime uh and and we paid those uh those as well. Uh, so th- those have all been taken care of and um I think at this point, if you have any specific questions, uh, we'll be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, counsel, I'll start with uh Councilman Brightwell.
I like, I like to reserve my time for this one, please. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Um, I I think I understand everything that was uh that I had questions on the last time uh is cleared up. So I don't think I have any questions uh this this time.
Okay, great. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, I I I feel the same way as Councilman Frazier. Uh, you know, a lot of the questions I think we had, at least I I had from the last time, I think, have have been addressed now, so I don't have any questions uh at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
I I I feel the same. I I looked at the information that was sent over by Dawn. I looked at all the, everything else. It looks like they've answered all of our questions um that we had at our last meeting and uh currently I I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks? Councilwoman Banks?
She on mute?
Yeah, I was on mute talking away. I was playing Councilman Frazier, sorry. Um, before I make any comments, I would like to disclose that I do have a relative that is a current tenant at this property. Um, I believe that a lot of my questions and concerns at the last meeting have been met. Um, it, um, Attorney King, you mentioned that there was going to be a section of this contract that was presented to us that was going to be removed. I guess my only question is that the um again amended contract be presented to council um you know, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
And I, and I have nothing further to add. Thank you. Except thank you for addressing our questions that we had at the last meeting. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Banks, and thank you for the uh getting all the information to us and thank you for your help and support in this as well, Dawn. Uh, Mr. Mayor, is there any questions or comments from you? You must be on mute. Ken, are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm unmuted and muted. Um, I said, uh, no, I have no other questions. Um, I'm looking forward to this getting resolved. It's been a long journey.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, City Administrator Zorn, any comments from you?
Yes, Madam President, I just want to comment. I'm excited about the investment happening. This property is looking its age, the, you know, the the investment per unit, the um the mechanical systems being up upgraded, tho- those are important to the long-term viability, protecting the stock for our seniors. So I'm I'm excited to have a new ownership and ownership that's willing to invest in it. We never heard that from the previous group, even when they first came in. They they weren't talking about putting real dollars into this property and this ma- and that matters in the long term. Short uh disruption, uh slight inconveniences, you know, some of us experienced just across the street. But uh, it it's a, it's the right investment and it'll improve the quality of life for everyone living there. Those are my only comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This uh hearing no other questions or comments, would this be on our, yes?
I guess I can, can I say something now?
Yes.
Okay, I I sort of held off, but um and I held off because I've tried, tried to ju- just to adjust. But um, I I feel very comfortable with Contour and my years on the uh Northern Air Committee and also now the most current activity with Contour give me feeling that they will be a good steward of this particular property. So I look forward to what uh what they will be doing there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, hearing no other comments or questions, um, this will be on the consent agenda for, at our next uh meeting. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll get everything out as soon as possible.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now we come to our uh communications pro- portion. And I just would like to read this uh again to all of our uh to everyone, please abide by the rules of the procedure of the Southfield City Council and refrain from making personal or disrespectful slanderous or profane remarks. Uh, no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official that this is unri- that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council and any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent or your mic will be muted. Thank you. And now we will go to our communications. Madam Clerk, would you please open the line and if there's anyone on, please raise your hand or if not, and you'll be acknowledged by the clerk. Madam President, we do have, we get them in the order received. First we have Edward uh Gimrich.
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, can I be heard by all attendees?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Good. This is my first um uh meeting attendance and um I'm learning a lot. I I appreciate the efforts that the council and the mayor has done to approve our city. Uh, I like to make a few comments and then I have a question. Uh, first of all, I'm very pleased with our new trash company that's been here for, I believe, a year and a half, GFL now, Green for Life. I think they're doing a superior job uh as opposed to Rizzo, who I believe we had some issues with. So thanks to council for creating that contract. Uh, the second issue that I want to make a comment in on is the deer in this area. Uh, I believe I've spoken with a representative from the mayor and there's going to be apparently a cull in January in some of the public areas within this area. I live at Tenon Beach and it is just overrun with deer here. I can't keep plants, shrubs, trees, anything. I wish someone would come here and take a picture of my landscape. It's 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 bad. Anyway, I I am glad to see that we're finally going to limit the population in a equitable manner. Um, there were, there are just too many. There are just too many, and I'd like to make the suggestion also that possibly they could close the cemetery behind me, which is Holy Sepulcher, and have a bow and arrow hunt there. That's, there no, wouldn't be any public there, and I think that would be a paramount idea. Also Robbie Gage Park, which is pretty much uninhabited by anybody, I think that would be a good place to have a cull also. I'm I'm glad this is being addressed finally, something has to be done. I've got pictures of ten to fifteen deer in my backyard, it's 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 gotten that bad. Anyway, that's my my comments. My my question is, we've had a lot of rain here this year. I I called Lee Lee Schultz, the city engineer, and she indicated to me that we had, I believe in June, seven-point-six inches, July eight-point-one, then we had this recent storm where it dumped another five inches, particularly in the west side, west side of Southfield, and I still have water percolating up from my storm drain in my basement. I would like to see if somebody could come out and check the drain systems in this area to make sure they're not blocked, impeded, or obstructed by debris or whatever else, so I can I can eliminate that possibility as far as being why I'm still getting water percolating up from my storm drain. I just checked it an hour ago, and it's still coming up, even though I have a float in there that stops, if I press the 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 top of the float down, it comes up, and it shouldn't be that way now.
Excuse me, Mr. Gimrich?
Yeah.
We only allow three minutes for communication, and your time is up, but if you could leave your question with the clerk, she will get it to us, and we can have someone address that for you.
How do I do that?
Madam Clerk?
Can we get an address too, Madam President?
Yeah, we, I have the information, Edward, the email that I gave you, is that still accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll email you and get your information in a few minutes, the your your physical address, so you don't have to put it out. I'll get that, give me a second.
Yeah, thank you, I'm not the only one in this area with this issue, so I appreciate some action on this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Um, there is no cull planned. I think the confusion here is that the DNR, in one of the numerous meetings I had with them, said that they would be, they would not be adverse to a bow and arrow hunt in However, we have no plan to do that until we have more buy-in. As you know, last council meeting, the council approved a resolution to urge the county to come up with a regional solution, and culling deer in one community isn't going to solve the problem, as deer don't respect municipal boundaries. Personally, I support a cull, because I think it's for the health of the deer, as well as the the understory of our woodlands. But I just wanted to make that clear, there is no cull planned, it's just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any, is there anyone else?
Yes, I just unmuted the other callers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
When you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Gerard Mullen, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, according to Chapter Seven in your Southfield City Charter, this city, your city, the great city of Southfield, has been under the judicial rule of the Southfield Municipal Court continuously from the Big Bang, that is, from April twenty-eighth, nineteen-fifty-eight, up until and including this very moment, for a continuance of over sixty-three years, and still counting. Every Southfield student of government should know the truth about Chapter Seven, that is, Chapter Seven is all a lie, a big lie, because the Southfield Municipal Court was abolished, yes, abolished, abolished by the nineteen-sixty-three Michigan Constitution on January the first, nineteen-sixty-nine, and it was replaced by the Forty-Sixth District Court on said date over fifty-two years ago, a long, long, long time ago. Madam Chair, words matter, that is, they should matter. To say that black is white is a lie. Likewise, for the last fifty-two years, to knowingly call the Forty-Sixth District Court the Southfield Municipal Court in Chapter Seven in the Southfield City Charter, your charter, Madam Chair, is also a lie, a big lie, a Trump-like lie, a whopper. Ask yourself this one question: Should a Southfield civics teacher be allowed to use the Southfield City Charter, that is, to say council's charter, as a textbook to teach Southfield civics, that is, to teach the big lie, a Trump lie, to your child, and to your grandchild, and to Southfield students yet unborn? It is about time that this city council delete Chapter Seven, that is, the big lie, from your outdated charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a charter commission. If the city of Detroit, that is, the dysfunctional city of Detroit, can mandate periodically a ballot initiative for a proposed charter commission in order to try to update their charter, then the Southfield City Council should be able to do the very same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Please excuse my voice, I was at the ADL League Walk, and the grass has me sneezing and going through all of these allergic reactions, so I hope you can hear me okay. I still wanted to appeal to the residents to make sure, prior to Election Tuesday, that you know where you vote. Make sure you have your identification, or the things that you need to vote. I wanted to talk to the people that are running for office, so that you can appeal to your volunteers. Stop putting those campaign signs in areas that they don't belong. Each and every candidate was given a packet, and it tells you the do's and don'ts, and where not to put these signs. The city is starting to look like a hodgepodge, every place there's campaign signs that they don't belong. The other thing I wanted to talk to the volunteers of these candidates about, every business in Southfield pretty much has a camera. When you try to pull a sign out of the ground, and you're not successful, and you step on it, and you try to destroy that sign, you never know when you are on camera. And I think I'm going to leave it there, because those people know exactly who I am talking about. On a real, real positive note, the Northland City Center, all of the residents in the city of Southfield are very excited about this project. The Northland City Center City Center is definitely trending when it comes to redevelopment in the state of Michigan. And who knew, in our small, yet diverse, vivacious, and energetic city, the city of Southfield, twenty-six-point-six square miles, that the entire state of Michigan would be talking about our redevelopment for the Northland City Center? Keep in mind that we have something to be very, very proud of, that Northland was the oldest and regional mall, first built in the United States in nineteen-fifty-four, right in our city, the great city of Southfield, so we have something to be proud for, hold your heads high, and start hashtagging on your Facebook, hashtag Northland City Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, no one else appeared to want to be recognized tonight for public comment.
Thank you. Counsel, does anyone have any ending remarks that they would like to, I'll just briefly go through real quick, if anybody wants to say something, or acknowledge anyone, or anything like that, and I can start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
No, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Just briefly, for all my veterans out there, I want you to know that there, this is flu season, and the VA has over seventy thousand locations, partner locations around the country, for you to get flu shots. There will be Walgreens, CVS, and other urgent care locations. Call before you go there to make sure you, they are recognizing, but if you're a VA-authorized healthcare veteran, you should be able to get care at the adult's location. And I just want to mention that it was rewarding, and I, a little bit, that someone did mention to me, that they, here the messages I put out for veterans, I got a couple comments like that, so it is rewarding, I will continue to do those announcements. But the big thing about veterans' announcements are, if you if you know of veterans, just pass the word on, because everybody who's listening here is not a veteran. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier? Are you on mute? Okay, we'll call that, Councilman Hoskins?
I'm not, I have nothing to to add tonight, thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
I am, I'm glad that this meeting took that long, and we were able to work together to move the city forward, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Frazier, are you unmuted?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, I was chatting wrong like Ms. Banks. I wholeheartedly agree with what Councilman Brightwell said about the flu shots, but also I'd like to add that we still have so many people, sixty million, I think, left the United States, to get their COVID shots, and Michigan is going in the wrong direction. We were going in the right direction for a long time, now it seems to be headed in the wrong direction, and it's, you know, I think everyone knows someone that has had a problem with COVID, and it's unnecessary, because there's an answer out there, so I encourage everyone to to get a their COVID shots. The second thing is, we're building a lot of new apartments in Southfield, and I'd like someone to share with the council, how many apartments, units do we have in Southfield, and what is the demand? And I know times are changing, people, young people aren't buying houses like they used to, and they're going into apartments, but I'd like to know, are we keeping up with the demand, are we exceeding the demand? And of course, it's a it's a guesstimate, but I'd like to know how we're doing in Southfield with apartments. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did you have anything?
Good afternoon, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to, excuse me, thank everyone for that participated and helped pull off three very significant events since we last met. The Walk for the Awareness of Domestic Violence was well-attended, and last Sunday, the Walk Against Hate, despite the rain, a good crowd came out, and then, of course, the groundbreaking ceremony at for Northland City Center, the redevelopment. Three very good events, and I think we are proud that we participated in, as well as helped the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator Zorn, any comments or anything?
Yes, Madam President, I I too would like to thank council for its continued support of the administration, my entire team, the DDA Director, Michelle Freeman, Terry, Crowe, Lee Schultz, so many people have worked on this Northland project to get this far. Still a lot of work ahead of us, building, planning, engineering, still have to continue their efforts, but that does not ha- happen without the leadership that this council has provided. Some of us recall the Saturday sessions back in two thousand and fourteen, when we were, you know, first contemplated taking this venture on, and it was a true leap of faith on behalf of council leadership. You tested us all all along the way, made sure we made the right decisions, and I'm just pleased we're at this point. I would also want to just comment on Councilman Frazier's comments about Michigan's numbers heading the wrong way. We recently have had to take a step back with our, some of our masking policies. The present policy is anyone entering City Hall will have to have a mask on, there are masks at various entries and service points. I want to remind council and our employees and the general public that we've put up a lot of of glass dividers to protect people. We've also spent tens of thousands of dollars in air filtration devices, the infrared testing, the infrared light treatment process to improve indoor air quality. So anyone coming into City Hall will need to be masked up, employees in their work areas are able to unmask, whether they are traveling to different parts of of City Hall, they will be required to mask up. We're continuing to look at different protocols, and unfortunately, as long as the numbers continue to trend up, we will have to double down on what we're doing. We are holding a clinic for our employees to get their boosters, their flu shots, and we're trying to push the handful of employees who still have not gotten their shots, we're strongly encouraging those folks to get their shots as well. Those conclude my remarks this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make, remind everyone that Breast Cancer Awareness Month is October, and also, mental health awareness. Due to COVID, we've had a lot of depression and things going on, so just be aware that this this month is paying attention to those that are mental health concerns. And with that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order tonight, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.